Thank you councillors, almighty God. We, the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane, are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Apologies, are there any apologies? Councillor Hutton.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Huang will be absent today and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from this meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you, it has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Owen, that councillor Huang be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, I wish to advise that councillor Griffiths will be absent from today's meeting and ask that he be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded.
Thank you, it has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Cook, that councillor Griffiths be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We have hybrid participants. Yep, so... Okay, we have some technical issues to be resolved in regards to the hybrid meeting attendees. We'll try and resolve that as the meeting progresses. Councillor's question time, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Assistant Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor MacKay.
Thanks Chair, my question is to councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, among many parks and other assets, some of our ferry terminals were severely damaged during the 2022 flooding event, leaving some of them out of service. Could you please update the chamber on how the rebuild and recovery of our ferry terminals is going?
Councillor Murphy.
Thanks for the question councillor MacKay. With no less than three ferry terminals in your ward, I know that both yourself and your residents are keen to see our terminals back in working order. Last financial year, we carried 1.8 million passengers on the river across 130,000 services. With our new double-decker CityCats hitting the water and new ferry terminals like Howard Smith Wharves coming online, getting around the city by CityCat or KittyCat is continuing to be popular. But as we know, in February this year, a number of our terminals sustained serious damage by the floods and full services have had to be put on hold. Since this time, our terminals have been undergoing serious repairs, making sure they can come back online as soon as possible. And today, we reach a new milestone. I'm pleased to report that on Thursday morning, Sydney Street, Holman Street and QUT Gardens Point ferry terminals will reopen and will begin to take regular services once again. Residents in New Farm, Kangaroo Point and uni students from across the city will be happy to hear this news as they can once again have more travel options to get around our beautiful river city. Throughout the flood event, we saw a large amount of debris floating down our river, including pontoons and boats. The repairs to these terminals were not simple fixes. There were a number of moving parts with many components needing fixing, including handrails, signage, cladding and fender piles. There were also works, including repairs to the articulated gangways, land connections and replacement of buoyancy tanks which were damaged by the pressure of debris and strong river currents. Specialist marine contractor Fitzgerald have been repairing these gangways off-site at the Port of Brisbane before returning them to install at the terminals. Importantly, the key flood resilience features and design robustness of our terminals has ensured significantly less damage than would have otherwise occurred. This was one of the worst floods Brisbane has ever experienced, but we are building back better as part of our rebuild and recovery efforts. As part of the repairs, we are lowering the water level at which the gangways will open during flood events by half a metre, further reducing the risk of damage. The repair of our river assets is challenging at the best of times, but like the entire construction industry at the moment, we have faced significant supply chain issues, material shortages and availability of tradesmen and women. But with these challenges, the project team has managed to work around these issues and recycle many parts of the existing terminals. This has saved time and money and has skipped right past some material shortage issues. It's allowed us to bring our terminals back online in a matter of months from when the repairs first began. Remember Chair, in 2011, it took four years to have all of our ferry terminals back in operating order. This time, we will have completed the task in under 12 months.
Years.
That is a really good outcome and it proves that our flood resilient infrastructure has paid massive dividends for our city and it has reduced the time taken to get our terminals back in working order. As I've mentioned many times, in February, we did not lose any terminals, unlike in 2011. And so the recovery effort has been limited to repair work rather than having to rebuild whole new terminals from scratch. And while the flood may be long in people's minds, the reality is that having the entire network back in working order less than 12 months compared to four years is a good story to tell and I'll keep telling it Chair. By the time Christmas rolls around in a few weeks' time, Milton Maritime Museum and St Lucia ferry terminals are scheduled to reopen as well. And shortly after that, both North Key and Regatta will open in early 2023. Both North Key and Regatta sustained the most damage out of all of our ferry terminals and as such, they require more work and attention, so they will be the final ones to come back online. These flood resilient terminals are a world first, I remind councillors. And we've learnt valuable lessons from the last flood to improve their design even further as a result of this flood event. It's important Chair, that we learn from every flood event and we make changes to improve and we have certainly learnt some lessons here. I would like to thank the team who have been working hard to get our terminals and services back online as soon as possible. Of course firstly, the workers themselves who have been completing the repairs to our terminals, but also to River City Ferry, who have been a great partner to council during this time, making sure that we can bring services back online as soon as terminals are ready. I want to thank Dean Morse and his team at City Projects Office, who have led council's coordination on the repairs, and Vicky Hoskins and her colleagues in Transport for Brisbane, who have been ablely supporting them to deliver the return of services. To repeat Chair, from Thursday, we'll have Sydney Street, Holman Street and QUT back online.
Your time has expired, further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Brisbane residents are paying more and more but getting less and less. Today, you are asking all councillors to sign a $400 million cheque to cover the latest blowouts on your key inner-city projects. This means higher rates or less services in the suburbs. Which one will it be, Lord Mayor?
Lord Mayor.
Well Mr Chair, yet again, we've seen a basic lack of understanding of how the budget works from the leader of the opposition. He has, he has said that there are only two choices here. He has said they are either higher rates or cuts. Now, this is the person who, I will remind you, yes, last week, we found out one wants to cut the weekly collection service, waste collection service to fortnightly. So cuts, Cassidy is all about the cuts. So I understand why he would focus on higher rates and cuts because that's what Labour did when they were in office. Their rate increases four times were more than 6%. And we know that they shut down libraries and pools and now they want to cut the weekly waste collection service, the red top bin, to fortnightly. But we don't believe in that. We believe there is another way when it comes to managing the budget. And it's called responsible financial management. It's called running a budget that has a surplus. A surplus budget. Now if you actually have a look at the budget document that was delivered in June last year, you will see a thing, a line called increase in operating capability. And that figure there highlights a number that illustrates that we once again delivered a surplus budget. I have delivered every single budget as Lord Mayor as a surplus budget. And we put aside money in case of unexpected challenges. It's the reason we have a buffer zone in case of unexpected challenges. And so guess what's happened? There's been a pandemic, there's been a flood and now there's been a global inflation crisis.
Councillor Cassidy, please. Councillor Cassidy, please.
And so what we see here is justification of why we run surplus budgets. We put aside money for a rainy day and figuratively, it has been raining for the last three to four years in various ways. Pandemics, floods, inflation crises, these things are real and this is exactly why we have a budget surplus. Now, the documents, and I know councillor Cassidy doesn't understand the documents...
Councillor Cassidy, please. Councillor Cassidy. Councillor Cassidy, cease interjecting please.
The documents coming through today very clearly show that what we will see is in this current financial year, there will be a reduction in our surplus of $57.7 million this current financial year. There will be further reductions in the surplus next year and the year after, but guess what? Even with those reductions, there will remain a surplus. That is called responsible financial management. So we reject the idea that there's only two choices here. Labour's choices are higher rates or cuts. We believe there's a third way. Responsible budgeting allows us to cope with unexpected challenges, just like we're doing today. And that's exactly what we will continue to do. By budgeting responsibly, by putting aside a buffer zone financially, we can deal with these unexpected challenges. We've dealt with them in the past, we will continue to deal with them in the future. And I would also point out as well, that coming through today, the Queensland Treasury Corporation has once again given us a strong credit review. A strong credit review. That is an organisation at the state government level that independently assesses our financial position and given us a strong credit rating, year in, year out, because they know that we budget responsibly. They know that not only can we fund record investment in infrastructure, building the infrastructure our city needs as it grows, but also we do so in a financially responsible way. A way that keeps the, the things being delivered out on the ground, the services being delivered out on the ground, building the new infrastructure, investing in better public transport, better parks and green space, better suburbs. We will continue to do those things, but we'll continue to do them in a financially responsible way, Mr Chair.
Thank you, further questions? Councillor Adamin.
Yeah, thank you Chair, my question is to the Chair of the City Standards Committee, councillor Marks. Labour's dive right-in approach to FOGO will have massive unintended consequences for our city. Can you please update the chamber on how the Shriner Council's balanced approach to food waste is keeping Brisbane on the right track when it comes to managing food waste?
Councillor Marks.
Thank you Chair and through you, I thank councillor Adamin for the question. So last week in question time, the leader of the opposition councillor Cassidy called on the Lord Mayor to establish FOGO in Brisbane. But what councillor Cassidy through you, Mr Chair, seems to have forgotten, is that the Shriner Council was already in the pilot phase of the food waste recycling service. And we're in the process of gearing up our capability for future stages. So not only has this programme been established, Mr Chair, but we have already had over 650 tonnes of food waste received through our pilot households in their green bin. So Brisbane City Council, under the leadership of this administration, has a proud track record of creating a clean and green Brisbane for our residents. The introduction of a full FOGO curbside collection service in Brisbane, subtropical climate, is a complex proposal. While it is correct that a number of councils in Australia have introduced a FOGO collection service of some description, you'll find that most of them are located in regions which don't face similar climatic problems to South East Queensland. This component presents a serious dilemma for Labour's plan, which involves reducing the frequency of a basic service that the Brisbane, people of Brisbane rely on, their red bin collection. On average, 427,500 refuse bins are collected each week across Brisbane. That is a lot of bins to reduce collection on without any kind of plan through you, Chair, councillor Cassidy. Mr Chair, as the chamber is aware, the sheer size of our local government area also presents a challenge of how council will continue to scale up the programme. The sheer amount of food waste that BCC would collect in any one service is simply not comparable with any other council. It would undoubtedly present a serious resourcing challenge in current market conditions. The proposition is clear between the Labour and the Shriner administration on this issue. Who do you trust to roll out a carefully considered approach to food waste recycling in Brisbane? If you have any doubt, consider councillor Cassidy's comments about this issue last week in chambers. He said, and I quote, "Why does council not tap into the environmental and economic phenomenon", which is FOGO? This isn't something we're doing because it's a phenomenon. The Shriner Council has established the food waste recycling pilot as a part of our commitment to doing what's right to protect the environment. This staged approach has already seen contamination results of less than 1%, which is in line with industry's best practice. And having visited the two locations where the end product end, myself, I have seen some of that contamination and I can tell you, it's not good. So I'm very, very proud of what our residents are doing. The pilot households are doing a fantastic job and I congratulate them on their work in this space. Mr Chair, it is clear that Labour has no understanding of what council is already doing in this space. And what is even clearer is they continue to demonstrate their lack of administrative understanding by not comprehending how such a programme would operate. They seek simplistic solutions and are quite prepared to have bins with rotting food and them sitting on the curbside, without truly looking at the impact this will have on the residents. And I can tell you, having visited out at the Forest Lake Ward and the number of restaurants out there that have food in their bins, imagine sitting that around there for two weeks, I think it would not be nice. Food waste collected with nowhere to go. I want to be clear with chamber, Mr Chair, it is only this administration with a strong commitment for food waste recycling in Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you, further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes. Yes, thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Brisbane City Council did not provide any warning to Brisbane residents who live along Oxley Creek and its tributaries prior to the February floods, despite these tributaries being flooded in advance of the Brisbane River. What steps, if any, has Brisbane City Council taken to implement a warning system or protocol for flooding along Brisbane's largest tributary, Oxley Creek? Or will residents who live along the creek be flooded again without notice?
Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, well first of all, I reject the premise of the question. It is not accurate. We have a system known as the severe weather alert system, which in the lead-up to the February 22 floods, was sending out literally millions of text messages. This is a system that geared up on the Thursday, prior to the flooding on the weekend, and started sending out millions of text messages. It is the same system that sent out messages yesterday. It is the same system that sent out messages several weeks ago, the last time we had major rainfall. This is a system which...
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
My question relates to flooding along Oxley Creek and whether there will be a warning system implemented for flooding along Oxley Creek and its tributaries.
Thank you councillor Johnston, I believe the Lord Mayor is responding to the question about flood warnings.
If councillor Johnston wants to support her residents, the best thing that she can do is to encourage them to sign up to the Brisbane Severe Weather Alert System, which is a system which provides immediate, immediate alerts to people. And we actually saw it in the council chamber in recent weeks, where councillors were getting messages through this system within minutes, within minutes of a BOM alert. And now we know the state government operated system...
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Again, Mr Chairman, this is a relevance issue. I'm asking about warnings from Brisbane City Council to residents who live along Oxley Creek and its tributaries. Are they going to get any warning if there is a future flood?
Councillor Johnston, the Lord Mayor is responding to the question as asked.
I'm absolutely answering this question. Now, if councillor Johnston took the time to understand how the system works, we have a network...
Councillor Johnston, allow the answer to be heard in silence please.
Thank you Mr Chair. We have a network of creek monitoring devices in place in all the creeks of Brisbane. And at various locations along those creeks, there are river level detection devices. And they detect rising creeks, falling creeks and alerts are sent out via our system automatically. And in fact, in the recent event that we had a few weeks back, we got messages saying water is rising in Rocky Waterholes Creek came through. This is an automatic system that already exists and all people have to do is to sign up to it. And so, as I said, councillor Johnston will be doing the right thing by her residents to encourage them to sign up to the system that exists, that works well and that sends out messages immediately when situations change. Now those messages are based on the direct BOM advice, or they are based on the direct river level monitoring devices, which detect whether a creek is in flood or not. That already exists, it's been in place for a long time and the best thing we can all do is get more and more people signed up. Now, we know that in recent times, and this year has seen a good, healthy jump in the number of people signed up to this system and we will continue to promote it. We've been actively and heavily pushing this system and encouraging people to sign up and we know that they have been, they have been. And so we've seen now, we've seen now thousands of extra people signing up. We've seen even yesterday, 270,000 alert messages went out automatically and instantly to people across the city for the downpour that we had yesterday. And so this system exists, it works well...
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Again, my question is not about rainfall yesterday, it's about whether residents who live along Oxley Creek and its tributaries are going to get a new, a warning system to give them some advance notice of flooding. It's not about rainfall in Brisbane generally.
Thank you councillor Johnston, I don't uphold your point of order, I believe the Lord Mayor is responding to the question.
Thank you Mr Chair, and for the third time, I'm happy to answer the question. The system exists, all people have to do is sign up to it. Now, I don't know about you, Mr Chair, but if I, if I lived in a flood-prone area, I'd want to be signing up to this system. And so I think that, when you look at the coverage of the city and the number of households that have signed up, we have around 30% of all households getting these alert messages. But when you consider that around 5% of the city flooded in February, you, it would be fair to assume that the vast majority of people in those flood zones have opted, have opted to sign up to the system. Why? Because they're interested to know. They want to know if there is an alert being sent out and they want to get the information quickly. They know that they can't rely on the state government operated system to give them timely messages. This is the system that we've repeatedly warned is taking anything from six to 12 hours to get a message out to the whole of Brisbane. That is a broken system. That is a broken system, which we've warned about and needs to be fixed. But guess what? Our system, the Brisbane Severe Weather Alert System, works really well and it's instantaneous.
Thank you, further questions? Councillor Owen.
Thank you Mr Chair. Mr Chair, my question today is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, last week, we heard councillor Cook whip up some outrage about local residents purchasing some wooden ferries. Could you please update the chamber on the facts of this matter?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you Mr Chair and through you councillor Owen for the question. On this side of the chamber, we've been working really hard to deliver a world-class ferry network that allows residents and visitors to enjoy the beautiful river while providing travel that is sustainable, reliable and safe. As councillors will know, in 2019, when we started work on disability access upgrades to the wooden monohole fleet, we found some defects in the ferries, including wood rot. As a result of those inspections, we removed the fleet of eight timber monoholes from service in light of significant safety concerns. Last week, we heard the Labour opposition once again mislead the people of Brisbane about council's ferry services. Councillor Cook claimed that the sale of the ferries had left hundreds of residents high and dry and she was of course referring to the closure of the Norman Park Ferry. I'm not sure who those hundreds are, Mr Chair, because we know that less than one person was using the Norman Park Ferry per crossing. Make no mistake, the condition of council's wooden ferries had nothing to do with the closure of the Norman Park Ferry. Instead, it had everything to do with the fact that no one was catching the Norman Park Ferry. Chair Labour's plan for public transport in Australia's fastest growing capital city is to reinstate the lowest patronised ferry service in Brisbane's history. A service that has been cancelled several times before due to low patronage, including by none other than their hero, Labour's Lord Mayor Jim Sawley. Now, as we know Chair, the monoholes were iconic to Brisbane, so we made the remaining vessels available for sale to the community. Brisbane residents love our monoholes Chair, but there's a saying, "If you love something, let it go." And that's something we did Chair and it's something we would do again. All vessels were successfully sold via a blind auction, all going to good homes with local South East Queensland buyers. Many of them are now moored from Breakfast Creek to Norman Creek while they await repair and restoration. The new owners certainly have a big task ahead of them in returning the vessels to former glory. The buyer of Guyonder has said, quote, "The hull has a huge amount of issues in it. In another couple of months, I'll have it watertight", unquote. I'm not sure Brisbane residents would like to be making their morning commute on a boat that isn't watertight, Mr Chair.
Councillor Cassidy.
I take the, I take the interjection from councillor Cassidy Chair, because what did councillor Cook have to say on radio about the wooden monohole? She said it was something like a light bulb that needed replacing and questioned whether they were actually fit for re-entering service, so good on you councillor Cassidy. But I'm not asking you to believe what council had to say about the condition of the ferries, believe what the buyers have to say, because the cost of the vessel itself is one thing, Mr Chair, but the cost to make them operational and safe, again, is the most expensive part of the task. And even after they're restored, it's important to remember that private owners are not required to achieve the same levels of maintenance and safety compliance that council is. While we operate the monoholes as a commercial public transport provider, private owners are not required to comply with the same levels of maintenance and disability and accessibility legislation. Add to that the significant work required to address our safety concerns about the vessels and it simply did not represent good value money for the rate payer to restore them. So let's recap, Mr Chair. Labour would have had us keep unsafe, rotting wooden ferries in operation when we now have a safe, high-quality, modern alternative with our Kitty Cats that we went to great pains to obtain from Sydney. They maintain that this represents a cut to services, despite the fact that we are now servicing all of the cross-river routes in exactly the same capacity with the Kitty Cats. And they would have us return the worst performing public transport service in Brisbane's history. I think it's very clear Chair, why this Labour opposition have no ideas for the future of our city and that's because they're stuck in the past. Whether it's on issues like the Norman Park Ferry Chair, issues like the monoholes, bus driver safety barriers, the King George Square Fountain debate that comes up again, the Nurrin Street Koala Land, every day Chair, in this chamber that we come here, is Groundhog Day for the Labour team. In fact, this Labour team is so bereft of ideas Chair, that they are now using the career males gossip column to, to conduct a recruiting campaign for their next Lord Mayor candidate, desperately trying to press gang former politicians into a role which is traditionally known in Brisbane as a poisoned chalice. And if Kate Jones is smart Chair, she will run a million miles from that role, because it always ends in tears, Mr Chair. Just like the opposition, just like the monoholes Chair, the opposition is full of rot. They're leaking on all sides and they will go down at the next election.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Thanks Chair, my question's to the Mayor. Lord Mayor, I think we can all agree that the housing crisis has gotten pretty bad and that there are a lot of people sleeping rough across our city. And I'm sure you and I would both agree that the best solution is to get those people housed and to provide support services. But in an immediate sense, there are lots of people sleeping in council parks and squares and other public spaces who don't have access even to basic shower facilities and toilet facilities. Now I know Orange Sky Laundry is providing some limited shower facilities in some locations, but would you be open to a conversation about providing more public shower facilities in council toilet blocks so that those rough sleepers at least have somewhere to take a shower when they need one?
Lord Mayor.
Well, Mr Chair, I've made my position on this issue very clear. The approach espoused by the Greens and councillor Sri Ranganathan is akin to giving up. It's basically saying that we're going to accept that people should just live in parks, live in public spaces and we're going to make it as comfortable for them there as possible. That is a city that has given up on finding homes for people and we are not going to give up on this, this challenge that we're facing. We are not going to become like those broken American cities that just have given up and their parks become tent cities because they provide no solutions to people, they just let people live in a park. Now, we've had an ongoing situation down at Curilpa, underneath the bridges there, where there have been people...
where there have been people camped out there and sleeping rough or living in tents. And what's our, what's our, what's our response to that been? Our response has been to engage the state government, to get our great council officers out there, and to offer support to those people and to find them homes. And that's exactly what we have done. And we've seen the reduction in the number of people down there because they have been offered support and they have been offered assistance, and the state government has worked with us to provide options for these people, options that don't involve sleeping in a park. And so, I will always say that making it as comfortable for people in a park is giving up on the problem of homelessness. That is not what a big-hearted city should do. That is not what a big-hearted city should do. We should be striving to provide roofs over the heads of people that are sleeping rough. That is the way we should be going, and that's where our focus should be. Now, there are a whole range of great charity organisations, there's a whole range of social enterprises, there's a whole range of government departments that exist to provide support and services to people that are sleeping rough, and that is a good thing. But we should never institutionalise people sleeping in parks. We shouldn't, because it's not acceptable in a wonderful, modern, forward-looking and progressive city like Brisbane to say that that is okay, to say that is the end outcome. The end outcome should be a roof over people's head. The end outcome is a pathway out of homelessness, not providing a shower and a tent in a park. That is not what our city should be aspiring to. I've said it in the past, and I repeat it again.
Thank you, further questions? Councillor Landers. Yes, councillor Landers, can you hear me?
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shriner Council is continuing to create more to see and do right across our city. Could you please update the chamber on how events like the Valley Fiesta are helping contribute to this as well as supporting our night-time economy?
Councillor Howard.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Landers for the question, because there really is so much more to see and do every day in Brisbane, and that's thanks in no small part to the Shriner Council and our continued investment in Brisbane's nightlife, and our fearless and unwavering support of our small businesses, artists, creators, and the thousands of people whose jobs rely upon them. We held fast last year and refused to let COVID get the better of us. We knew how much our nightlife sector was struggling during what seemed to be endless restrictions, and some told us it wouldn't be possible. But we made sure that Valley Fiesta went ahead last year, and in doing so, we supported a whopping 150 artists across 21 venues, an amazing feat and something that wouldn't have been possible without the support of the Shriner Council. To make that work, Valley Fiesta did look a little different to what we're used to with the entire program being within venues, and that was also part of a concerted effort to give as much support to our struggling venues. The team did incredible work to run Valley Fiesta last year, and this year was no different. I was proud to join the team in opening Valley Fiesta on Friday at King Street Food Festival with an all-ages event to kick off Brisbane's biggest annual party. And I was delighted that councillor Matic joined me, and it was really fantastic to be there in King Street with, I think, three stages and, and really so many people milling around, it was fantastic. So over the weekend, we saw more than 45 artists performing across 13 of Brisbane's most iconic music venues. We're so lucky to have an incredible number of artists and live music that call Brisbane home, and Valley Fiesta is the perfect opportunity to champion our homegrown heroes. The massive line-up was totally free and included some big names too, like Wigs, Gordy, and I know there are a few of us here in the chamber that are big fans of Holly Holley, who put on epic performances at the Fortitude Music Hall, again, all for free. As well as a stellar line-up of live music, we had a jam-packed program of free, family-friendly daytime activities, including food trails, workshops, art installations, and market stalls. And what's more is that we did it all in an inclusive and accessible way. The Shriner Council is proud to lead Australia's most inclusive city, and the team went above and beyond this year in making sure that Valley Fiesta offered a space for all residents to enjoy the best Brisbane has to offer. We were very proud to present an accessible and diverse program from creative workshops, markets, performances, and everything wonderful about our valley. The Soundgarden hosted the brand-new Access All Areas Stage presented by Spinal Life Australia and featured a space made accessible for everyone to experience the thrill of live music without barriers. This year's program was entirely free, taking over some of the valley's greatest music venues, including the Soundgarden, Fortitude Music Hall, The Bright Side, Woolly Mammoth, Rick's Backyard, and many more. The free program was something we were, again, very proud to deliver. With the cost of living on the rise, offering free events like this removes barriers across our community and allows everyone to enjoy the fun. Now, in its 25th year, Valley Fiesta truly is the jewel in the crown of our live music scene, never failing to deliver a program that's bursting at the seams with things to see and do. It was great to see thousands of people out and about over the three days enjoying the best of Brisbane, and we're extremely proud of the significant impact this festival makes to our city's economic and cultural landscape. Festivals like Valley Fiesta contribute to our vibrant and creative city, providing more to see and do and smile about while supporting our arts and events industry. I want to thank everyone who took part in organising last weekend's events. It was exciting to see the rich tapestry of artists come together in celebrating Brisbane's boundless creativity, and I'm extremely proud to be part of the Shriner Council that continues to deliver this incredible festival, and I look forward to supporting many, many more in the future. So if you missed out this year, don't worry, we'll be back again in 2023. And in the meantime, we've always got lots of activities and events to keep you occupied. This Friday, we're kicking off the festive season. Jingle bells will be ringing right across the city as we step into the Christmas cheer. We have carols and live music at Seventeen Mile Rocks on Friday, the 2nd of December, the Fairfield Christian Family Christmas Fair and Carols in the Park, Jingle All the Bay at Sangate, the famous Brookfield Bush Christmas and Ginderley State School Christmas carols, and last but not least, the Manly Harbour Village Christmas Lights, which will continue shining throughout the month for everyone to enjoy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor, and on the theme of paying more and getting less, today you are proposing a $33 million cut in infrastructure projects and an $18 million cut from the Lifestyle and Community Services Budget. These programs cover things like community services, sporting clubs, and homelessness support, as well as road projects. Which projects are you cutting from the budget, Lord Mayor?
Lord Mayor.
Well, Mr. Chair, one thing that we know is that when councillor Cassidy makes a claim, you better check it twice, because time and time again, he's been caught bending the truth, misrepresenting the facts, and he will stop at nothing. We even saw him today claiming that we are going to reduce council sittings by a week.
You are!
A week?
You are!
Since when do we ever sit for a week? We sit for one day. But that's all right, the truth doesn't get in the way of a good story for the opposition. He makes stuff up all the time, and we've seen him in this question making some more stuff up. So what we'll be cutting is the size of the surplus, that's what we'll be cutting. If you want to talk about cuts, the only thing we'll be cutting is the size of the surplus, there'll be a 57.7 million reduction in the size of the surplus.
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
My question was relating to capital expenditure cuts in the second budget review of $33 million in the Infrastructure for Brisbane program and almost $18 million in Lifestyle and Community Services. I didn't talk about the surplus, and I know the Lord Mayor doesn't have any idea of what's before us or the sitting calendar, but there were specific items that I asked about, if you could bring him back to the question.
Thank you. Lord Mayor, to the, to the question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, the, we know the leader of the opposition, whenever a budget review comes up, reads the same old speech that someone's written for him that says the same things every time.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
Under the meeting's local law, the Lord Mayor is required to answer the question, not debate the question. It was very clear, the question was about cuts to the Infrastructure for Brisbane program and the Lifestyle and Community Services program, which is in his budget review he's bringing today. Could you bring the Lord Mayor back to the question, please?
Lord Mayor, I believe, I don't uphold your point of order, councillor Cassidy, I believe the Lord Mayor is responding to the question.
When it comes to infrastructure, Mr. Chair, this current financial year's budget provides more funding for infrastructure than any other year in the city's entire history. In 100 years, more money is being provided this year for infrastructure than any other year in the city's history. And councillor Cassidy has the hide to talk about cuts? Like, what, what, what is he on about? The reality is, we are investing more than ever before in infrastructure, and in fact, there's been a provision of over $1 billion this year for capital works and infrastructure. Why? Because our city is growing quickly. Now, as councillor Cassidy well knows, in any budget review, various timing changes to projects come through, some projects run behind where we would like them to be. And that is a reality for so many projects right across the three levels of government right now. We see projects under incredible stress from global inflation, from supply chain issues, from worker shortages, and a whole range of other challenges. Now, councillor Cassidy would like to think that these challenges don't exist. He would like to think that they don't exist, but if you talk to his colleagues up in George Street, they will tell you, these challenges are real. They will tell you the challenges are real. And when, when, for example, Minister Bailey talks about the challenges he's facing on his projects, it is interesting to see what he says. He's made some very, he's made some very interesting claims. Let me quote Minister Bailey, "The opposition's lack of basic economic understanding is embarrassing."
Point of, point of order to you councillor.
If the Lord Mayor wants to talk about Mark Bailey, he can do it in his ENC, but this was a specific question about Infrastructure for Brisbane program and Lifestyle and Community Services. In the budget review, shows a cut of $33 million in capital in Program Two and an $18 million cut in capital in Program Five. He needs to answer that question.
Lord Mayor, can I bring you back to the question, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I was answering the question, and I have answered the question already, which is, we're spending more on infrastructure, we're investing more on infrastructure than ever before. So any suggestion that we're somehow spending less is just false, is just false. But I was simply putting this in context of the challenging construction environment that we are under for building things at the moment. And the best way to do that is to use the words of councillor Cassidy's Labor colleagues up in George Street. And I go on to say, "The opposition's basic lack of economic understanding is embarrassing. Anyone building a house or renovating at the moment would be experiencing this, as is every other state. The opposition must want us to cut projects or put them on hold or discope them all while our population booms and we get ready for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games." Is that what they are seriously proposing? Now, that's, that's Minister Bailey talking about the challenges that he's had for projects. But Minister Bailey is pressing ahead with his projects. We are pressing ahead with our projects, as we should as the population booms. And so, this, Mr. Chair, is a purely political question from the leader of the opposition, designed to misrepresent the facts, designed to try and confuse people and con people about what is actually happening. But the people of Brisbane know that no administration has ever invested more in infrastructure than this one, and no, no budget has ever provided more funding for capital works and infrastructure than this year's budget, Mr. Chair.
So I, actually, Lord Mayor, could I ask that you move an amendment under Section 11.2b to move a motion to allow for the moving of the minutes, and that needs to be seconded? So this is to move the agenda, change the agenda?
You've got to move it.
That should be amended under Section 11.2b.
Mr. Chair, I move that the agenda should be amended under Section 11.2b to change the agenda and to allow the minutes to be moved at this point.
Seconded.
Seconded by councillor Adaman. We have a motion to amend the minute, the agenda of today's meeting to allow for the moving of the minutes. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Can I have confirmation of the minutes, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the minutes of the 4,697th meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of November, 2022, be received, taken, as read, and confirmed.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Adaman that the minutes of the 4,697th meeting of council held on Tuesday, the 22nd of November, 2022, be received, taken, as read, and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it, and my apologies, councillors, for being distracted by the hybrid meeting issues that we have now resolved. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 21st of November, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 21 November, 2022, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Johnson.
Yes, I have two points of order. The first one is, I am seeking the further following information about item B and C, and that is, is the, do the impacts of state government master plans and priority areas, priority urban development areas form part of the planning assumptions that are used to model the infrastructure needs for the L-Gip and the L-Tip? And I'm seeking further information about that prior to the debate.
Thank you.
And have another point of order, if that's okay?
Okay, sure.
My second point of order is, I'm asking that items B and C are taken as seriatem together for debate, and items G, H, I, and K are also taken together separately for debate. Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, that's right. Oh, and, I'm sorry, and voting.
And voting, yes.
Yep, sorry, yep, and voting.
Okay.
Sorry, yep.
All right. B and C seriatem together, and G, H, I, and K separately, each item, for debate and voting. Okay. That's what you said. You said separately for debate and voting. Yes, each item individually.
No, no.
As a, as a block.
B, C are taken together.
Yes.
And then separately from those.
Yes.
G, H, I, and K are taken together.
As a block, okay. Well, not separately, as you said, okay, fine. Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last night, tonight, and Wednesday night, we've lit up all our assets in purple for the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust Annual Christmas Appeal, which is now underway. The Annual Christmas Appeal raises funds for the Christmas Grant Program, where we distribute much-needed funds right in the lead-up to Christmas at a time when they are desperately needed in the community, and a time when those frontline charities are providing critical services in the lead-up to Christmas. Obviously, for many of us, we hope that Christmas is a, is a happy time of year, but for too many people in our community, it is a time where they are lonely and lacking in support, and there's so many great organizations that are out there providing frontline services, and through the Christmas Appeal, the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust can support those charities we do each year, and we aim to do so again this year, and so we're raising awareness of that grants program. Obviously, anyone can donate to the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust, and it is tax-deductible, as is your donation for other charities. On Thursday night, Astoria Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Radcliffe Place, and Tropical Dome will be lit up in red to support World AIDS Day. Since 1988, World AIDS Day has been held globally on the 1st of December. It's a day for the community to show their support for people living with HIV and to commemorate people who have also died of AIDS-related conditions. Also on Thursday night, City Hall will be lit up in purple to support the Endeavour Foundation's Imagine What Is Possible Ball. So the ball is being held here at City Hall, and we're lighting the building up purple in honour of that Endeavour Foundation ball. On Friday night, our assets will be lit up in green to support Disability Action Week. It's a week that's being organised by Sporting Wheelies, who do a fantastic job in our community and as one of the leading providers of inclusive sports, recreation, and rehabilitation. sports, recreation, and rehabilitation therapy in Queensland. On Saturday night, Radcliffe Place and the Tropical Dome and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in blue, orange, and green to support International Day of People with a Disability. The day is held on the 3rd of December each year, and is also a United Nations observed day aimed at increasing public awareness and understanding of people with a disability. Finally, on Sunday night, the Story Bridge will be lit up in purple and yellow to support 75 years of Lions service to the community. Lions Australia has grown to be the largest service club in Australia, and, and since it was first formed in 1947, there are now 1,200 clubs and more than 25,000 members across the country. We had originally proposed to light up our assets earlier, but it coincided with the passing of Her Majesty the Queen. And obviously, there were no light-ups during that period. So we've rescheduled this one, and I particularly want to thank councillor Steve Toomey for his advocacy and ensuring that we didn't forget this important light-up opportunity. So thank you, councillor Toomey. I also did want to mention briefly the end of an era, in some ways, with yesterday, after 10 years on the board, chairing the board of Museum of Brisbane, former Lord Mayor Sally Ann Atkinson has stepped out from that position after a decade of guiding Museum of Brisbane as Chair of the Board. So it was a very sad day yesterday in many ways, but also one to celebrate the contribution that Sally Ann Atkinson has made to our city, and particularly the Museum of Brisbane, which continues to go from strength to strength. It is a wonderful thing when someone not only serves the city in an elected role, as she did as Lord Mayor, but also continues to give back to the community, and be actively involved, and active in community life, but also supporting the council that she loves so much, the city that she loves so much. And, you know, 10 years as Chair of the Board of Museum of Brisbane is a wonderful milestone, and we thank her for that long service. Yesterday, we agreed to make Sally Ann Atkinson the official patron of the Museum of Brisbane. So while she's no longer the Chair of the Board, she will continue on as patron, and continue to encourage people to support the museum, and donate to the museum, and attend museum events. So thank you to Sally Ann Atkinson. Item A in front of us, Mr Chair, is the council and standing committee meeting dates and recess periods for 2023. We bring through a submission like this each year, so that councillors can plan out the coming year. And this one goes through till early 2024 as well, so that people can map out and plan the rest of the term of office. And so we're bringing this through in the normal manner. There is a reduction of one normal meeting, one normal meeting, not a week, one normal meeting. All up, if you include budget meetings, we will have 30 meetings where we come together to decide important matters. And there is one, one meeting reduction in the schedule proposed. I'm sure we'll hear Labour say that it's a death of democracy and make various outrageous claims. But we know that Labour's contribution in these meetings is always very limited. They claim that they are the most important thing ever, but it's a dog ate my homework approach, where they roll out the same tired speeches recycled every time in their, in their responses. And if it wasn't for councillor Johnston speaking on every item, we could reduce the number of meetings even further, and the time of those meetings, because we know the contribution that councillor Johnston makes.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
I don't set the agenda at council, Mr Chairman. The Lord Mayor's comments are not only false, they're offensive. The agenda is actually set by the LNP. I can't change it.
Yeah. Lord Mayor, could you please not refer to councillor Johnston unless she's mentioned specifically in the agenda?
Apparently, I've been censored. So, okay, I can't mention councillor Johnston ever again. Look, the, the reality is, there is a one-meeting reduction proposed for just over the next 12 months, and it is something that will see the business of council continue. All of the important things that we need to do will continue happening. The councillors will have unlimited opportunities to speak, as they do at the moment. As councillor Johnston continues to take up at every opportunity, they will continue to have those opportunities. So let's hear the hyperbole that we will hear in response to this. It'll be interesting. Item C, no, that's part of the bulk.
D, E, F, and J.
Item D is the major amendment to the Brisbane City Plan, the Sandgate District Neighbourhood Plan. So this is coming through in its final stage. This has got an interesting history to it. We see an opportunity to increase supply in a beautiful part of Brisbane, and one that is very livable, and one that more people no doubt would love to live in if they had the opportunity. But we see a case where the local councillor has actively opposed new development in his area, and we see that playing through in the outcome today. We know that in the current planning arrangements for the Sandgate area, the maximum height limit is just four storeys, despite the fact that, you know, a comparable place like Winham has much higher limits, because there's an opportunity for more people to live in Winham. And, and Winham is a beautiful place that goes from strength to strength. But what we saw is, our initial proposal was to allow a modest increase from four storeys to six storeys in some locations. That was the original proposal. That was vehemently opposed by the anti-development local councillor, councillor Cassidy, who ran an entire election campaign against, against that proposal. There were banners and signs everywhere saying no to six storeys in Sandgate, even though there were only limited sites that were proposed for six storeys. He was very clearly anti-development and anti-growth of his area. And we've seen this play out now in this plan. So, as we do, we listen, we listen to the feedback, and we made a sensible compromise, which would see the height limit raised from four storeys to five storeys in some locations, which is short of the six storeys which was originally proposed. But what we see here is that ultimate plan coming through. Now, councillor Cassidy has claimed multiple times that he wants to see more affordable housing. We've thrown down the gauntlet to him to offer suggestions. And he has helpfully come back with just one or two suggestions in his area where you could see more affordable housing. And one of those suggestions, he expected the ratepayers to buy the land, to buy the land to build affordable housing. And so this is quite extraordinary. He's against development, he's against growth in his area, and his, his big suggestion to increase affordability is for ratepayers to buy land and build affordable housing. This is quite clearly, this is quite clearly trying to let the state government off the hook for what they should be doing in this area. But what council should be doing is providing more supply, more supply, something which Labour councillors oppose again and again in this place.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, seconded.
We have an extension of time motion, moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Our very clear role, and this is a role that is actually set up by state government frameworks and legislation, is to provide for supply for the city. And in fact, the state government wants us to provide anywhere from 10 to 15 years of available supply in our city. And so we faithfully go about the process of trying to identify new areas for supply, and time in, time out, Labour councillors oppose those changes that would enable more supply. So if they tell you they care about affordable housing, they are forgetting that supply is a critical part of the equation when it comes to ensuring that housing is affordable. And so you can't say that you care if you continue to oppose something like 80 or 90% of all the plans that come through that would enable more supply. Now, I think if my figures are correct, I'm not sure if they've been updated with the recent plans that have come through, but out of the 16 neighbourhood plans that came through in recent years, Labour voted against 14 of them, 14 of them. These are all plans that identified sensible increases in supply, but Labour opposed in something like 80 or 90% of the times. And so once again, we will see an opportunity in the Sandgate area to provide some modest increase in supply, something that was opposed by the local councillor as part of a political campaign, and something now where we have a compromise, not six storeys, but five storeys over and above the existing level of four storeys maximum. So this is, you know, it is what it is, I would simply say. And this is a case of councillor Cassidy's made his bed, and now he's sleeping in it. Which item next, item E? Item E, Mr Chair, the second budget review. As I flagged last week, this budget review is part of our ongoing commitment to responsible financial management and the delivery of major infrastructure, the livery of services in the suburbs. And this allows us to continue the good work that has been done in recent years by tapping into the surplus to the tune of 57.7 million. And so, as I flagged last week, the surplus that we have put aside this financial year will decrease by 57.7 million, to allow us to absorb some of the cost increases that are coming through, thanks to the global inflation crisis. But we will also flag that the cost impacts of circa $400 million that we're facing at the moment are not all being faced in the current financial year, they are being faced over the coming several years. And so some of them are this financial year, some of them are projected next financial year, some of them are projected in the financial year after. But we are proactively dealing with the issue now, and we're making adjustments to the surplus this year, and also the anticipated surplus next year and the year after, to help absorb those costs and cater for the growth of our city and the continued investment in infrastructure and projects. And so, we know that the, the price of so many basic things has gone through the roof. These are challenges being faced by all levels of government, by the private sector, even by mums and dads, as they deal with their weekly household budgets. These challenges are real. And I would also point out, when councillor Cassidy talks about rate increases, this year's rate increase was significantly lower than inflation, significantly lower than inflation. And so we've seen in the past, Labour increased rates by at least 6% on four occasions, on four different occasions. The average rate increase this year was 3, 4.93%, compared to an inflation rate right now of over 7%, over 7%. And so, Labour will selectively quote these figures here, but they are trying to con the people of Brisbane by really distorting the reality here. The reality is, we are investing more than ever before in building infrastructure, we are investing more than ever before in building a better Brisbane, and providing services to the people of Brisbane. And we have to do this now because our city is growing quicker than ever before. If we're in a situation where the city was reducing in population, we had population decline, in that sort of circumstance, maybe you could think about taking the foot off the accelerator. But we do not have that choice. We do not have that luxury, because the city continues to grow at a record rate, at the highest rate we've seen in many decades. And Australia's fastest-growing capital city is Brisbane, and we are at the heart of the fastest-growing region, South East Queensland. So this submission that comes through continues to keep the foot on the accelerator, to use the surplus to help absorb some of that cost impact, because it's the right and responsible thing to do. Item F is the Queensland Treasury Corporation credit review. I mentioned this before. For the 10th consecutive year, we have seen a strong credit rating with a neutral outlook. This is despite the extraordinary challenges, extraordinary challenges that we have seen. So not only on the one hand are we building more infrastructure and budgeting to fund more infrastructure than any year in the city's history. And in 2025, this city will turn 100. So the council, the Greater Brisbane Council was established in 1925, we are now approaching 100 years. In all of those almost 100 years, there has never been a year where we're investing more in infrastructure. And despite that, and despite the fact that we've had a pandemic which hit the budget to the tune of $220 million, a flood which hit the budget to the tune of $330 million, and now a global inflation crisis which is driving up the cost of building infrastructure, and we've seen that coming through today to the tune of $400 million over the coming three years, we still, we still have a strong credit rating with a neutral outlook. And so that is indicative of the fact that we continue to run a strong and responsible budget. And so credit to all of the team in council that works very hard to keep the budget strong, balanced, and responsible, to put aside the money each year to create a surplus for unexpected things to happen. And they do happen, and they have happened. And so, just at the same week where Labour makes false claims about cuts or increases in rates, we have the Queensland Treasury Corporation giving us once again a strong credit rating. And they've done that independently, they've done that in a way that now for 10 years in a row has rated councils' management very strongly. Now, I would have expected, after two or three years of a pandemic and a flood, that the outlook would have been downgraded. This would not have been a surprise to me. In fact, I was anticipating, you know, a strong credit rating with either a developing outlook or a negative outlook because of the sheer volume of the shocks. That would not have surprised me at all. But we've seen the return of the strong credit rating with a neutral outlook, which is a good positive outcome for the city. And so, item J is the next one. This one is the lease of land at 34 Amesbury Street, Kangaroo Point. Councilors lease this land to the Queensland Government since 2002. The land accommodates wharf structures over the Brisbane River adjacent to the naval stores building. The lessor is the Department of Resources. They've offered a new 21-year lease. This lease is required to maintain the existing use of the wharf structures. State government has conditioned that the leased land forming the wharf area must only be used in conjunction with the adjoining land use occupied by the naval stores. We obviously agree to that condition. The new lease will commence on the 14th of March next year, and expire on the 13th of March 2024. This is a pretty straightforward matter, which I no doubt expect will get everyone's support. That's all the items in the first block, Mr Chair, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate on items A, D, E, F, and J. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Can I just, at the outset, ask that A, D, and E be verded on as a block, and then F and J together? So there'll be two separate items?
Just for voting?
Yes, correct. On clause A, starting with clause A, you know, ratepayers are now, because of this Lord Mayor's incompetence, bracing for a $400 million budget blowout on a couple, just a couple of his inner-city pet projects. Ratepayers aren't silly. They, they will see this for what it is. They'll see right through the Lord Mayor's spin, and they will expect, they would expect when they see this and they read news of this $400 million blowout on Lord Mayor Adrian Schriner's watch, that councillors and the Lord Mayor would get in and roll their sleeves up and work hard for the following year to make sure that we can mop up this Lord Mayor's mess. You'd think that he would be a little embarrassed about that, about a blowout on his pet project going from, what did it start at, $944 million, the metro, then to $1.2 billion, then to $1.7 billion, and now racing towards a $2 billion project that's, that is delivering a lot less than was promised initially. So you would expect, you'd expect that the administration would say, we need to, we need to deal with these wicked issues that are facing Brisbane, these massive budget blowouts, the housing crisis in Brisbane, and get, get the work rolling on that homelessness strategy he's been holding back, get the work rolling on a housing strategy that he's been holding back, deal with the significant issues, address the suburban congestion that's now making Brisbane not just the fastest-growing capital city in Australia, but also the most congested city in Australia. But no, no, what we, what we have... But no, no, what we, what we have is an extra week off. Just a couple of years ago, a few years ago, there were thirty-two Tuesday meetings, thirty, thirty-two Tuesday, well, not even, not even quite that long ago, councillor Johnson, I'll take the interjection, just a couple of years ago, there were thirty-two Tuesday meetings excluding budget meetings in here, and the Lord Mayor has the gall to come in and say, amidst all of these wicked problems that are facing Brisbane, we'll cut another one. It was twenty-nine, this year it's twenty-eight next year. So, you think ahead of an election, there'd be an awful lot of work to be done. I'm not sure whether the Lord Mayor will be giving bus drivers an extra, an extra week off work, or librarians, or council cleaners, or the hard-working staff who, what's left of them out in the field cutting concrete and trimming trees and things like that an extra week off, but he's giving his administration another week off. So, meeting less next year is not the answer to Brisbane's problems that we need. So, we won't be supporting this item before us today. Clause D is the major amendment to Brisbane City Plan for the Sangate District Neighbourhood Plan, and this is the final step for the flawed Sangate Neighbourhood Plan. Now, I was initially enthusiastic about the possibility of a new neighbourhood plan in working with the community and having a holistic approach to the way in which Sangate, Shauncliffe, Deegan and Brighton grows over the next twenty years. What I got and my community got though was a politicised process where the LMP administration did things in secret, briefed the media before the local councillor and failed to appreciate how attuned the community was to the political actions of the LMP. We could have had an outcome where not only the character of our tin and timber homes was preserved and strategic locations were identified for higher density, but also didn't fundamentally and fatally alter the village character of Sangate itself. That was possible if we had an administration willing to go on that process with the community. But we didn't. We didn't have an LMP administration and an LMP mayor who was willing to do the hard work. I think the three hundred additional dwellings that have been identified could have been higher if a proper conversation was had with the community. I would have been part of that process had it not been bastardised from the very beginning by the political motivations of this Lord Mayor. I want to thank the council officers who've worked on this neighbourhood plan, they, they certainly took the enormous amounts of feedback that was provided at every single stage by the community and wound back a whole lot of the LMP's initial proposals. And while the LMP will lie and lie and lie about this, that's in their DNA of course, I did provide constructive feedback, Chair, at every stage of the process. Some of this was taken on board and some was not, and every opportunity I had with council officers to provide that feedback was, was around where that increased density would be appropriate and where it would not be appropriate. And my views were in line with the community. So, at the end of the day, this is a good example of a bad process that the community fundamentally felt shut out from. It's no good, it's no good for the LMP to come in here today and say this neighbourhood plan is about the current housing crisis, when this same LMP administration refuses to do any work on a housing strategy they promised back in twenty nineteen. So, I cannot support this plan in its current state. The next item, item E is the budget second review. This budget review sees the transition of a budget not that long ago that was a dog's breakfast now into a steaming pile. This budget, as all budgets, are a statement of the priorities and values of our elected leaders. And, and in our case, it's a unique position where the Lord Mayor of Brisbane has the sole responsibility of delivering a budget for Brisbane. And this review confirms that the priorities and values of this LMP mayor do not align with those of the people of Brisbane. We're seeing a trend towards more debt and higher rates for the people of Brisbane, but not much to show for them in the suburbs. There's more debt, the LMP takes on increasing debt for their glitzy inner-city projects and we'll see less and less out in the suburbs of Brisbane. There's a thirty-three million dollar cut to the infrastructure for Brisbane budget. Now, the Lord Mayor perhaps hasn't read what was prepared, you'd hope he would because it was his responsibility. It's his budget. Page eleven of this budget review, it makes it very clear, not, not for this quarter, but for this year's budget, there's a thirty-three and a half million dollar reduction in capital expenditure for the infrastructure for Brisbane programme. That's from an initial budget of three hundred and ninety-five million dollars. So, Lord Mayor was throwing figures around before saying there's a billion dollars for infrastructure. Well, in the infrastructure for Brisbane part of the budget, there was three hundred and ninety-five million allocated, and that's been cut by thirty-three and a half million dollars. Almost ten per cent of that suburban infrastructure budget has been gutted by this Lord Mayor. There's a seventeen point seven million dollar cut to the Lifestyle and Community Services budget in this review as well, not for this quarter, but entirely cut from this year's budget in that programme. So, this, this programme, Lifestyle and Community Services, does things like work with homelessness services to make sure that we can get people who are sleeping rough connected with services, sports fields remediation, upgrades to council-owned facilities that we lease to community organisations who are doing it really tough at this time of year. Now, we put the question to the Lord Mayor in question time today and say, which, which items will be cut from this year's budget? Because we know that there's a suburban schedule of works addendum to the budget, but we also know that doesn't form part of the budget itself. And all the Lord Mayor is required to do these days is to bring a single-line item to this council and expect us to support it, to say, please allow me to cut thirty-three million dollars from the infrastructure budget, and please allow him to cut nearly eighteen million dollars from the Lifestyle and Community Services budget, without telling councillors and without telling the people of Brisbane where those cuts are occurring, what projects are going to be cut, what congestion-busting projects are going to be cut, what zebra crossings are going to be cut, what rat-running projects, LATMs are going to be cut, what sports fields won't get remediated, what projects at which community lease sites aren't going ahead. The Lord Mayor is not being upfront and forthright with the people of Brisbane, I suspect because he's embarrassed by his decisions and so he should be. There's less, less infrastructure for our suburbs, there will be higher rates and higher debt. When this LMP administration came to power, the average rates bill for suburban Brisbane was around nine hundred dollars a year. It's now around eighteen hundred dollars a year. It's doubled in that time, but have suburban services doubled? No, there's less drainage projects, less congestion-busting projects, less public transport out in the suburbs, they're cutting that left, right and centre. Nothing about, nothing about housing whatsoever and homelessness. The people of Brisbane are paying more and getting less under this LMP administration. You think, you think that this LMP council would have learned a thing or two about transparency and accountability from the, the former Morrison government in, in the way in which they approached keeping all of those projects secret and decisions they were making secret. But, you know, I suspect they've learned absolutely nothing from that experience and they're going to be punished harshly for that.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
Extension of time for councillor Cassidy, been moved by councillor Cook and seconded by councillor Strunk. Call in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Moving on to item F, which is the Treasury Corporation's credit review. This is interesting, I think the Lord Mayor, I mean, maybe he does know what it is and he was sort of fluffing around, or perhaps, which is worse, he doesn't really understand how these credit reviews work. So, in the eyes of the QTC, council can continue to borrow, that's what this is about, it's about council's ability to borrow more money to fund blowouts on projects. They say council can continue to borrow because in their words, Brisbane City Council has a capacity and willingness to adjust rates to maintain sufficient revenue to fund operations and service debt. What does that mean in plain speak? That this LMP council led by Adrian Schrinner will raise rates, raise suburban rates to fund historic levels of debt that they have lumped Brisbane residents with, plain and simple. That's what this credit review says. It actually confirms what we all knew all along, but it's good to have it from an external, as the Lord Mayor says, independent, independent body in, in showing that this council, because it has a large and diverse rate base, we see from answers to quans today, it's four hundred and fifty thousand ratable properties, the QTC say, sure, you can borrow as much as you want and jack up rates as high as you want, but it doesn't account for that pain that that inflicts on average ratepayers. So, so they're very clear that they can do this, they're very clear that the Lord Mayor can go and borrow another four hundred million dollars to cover his stuff-ups on the Brisbane Metro and his inner-city bridge programme. He can do it, but should he? It doesn't talk about this council's priorities and values, this talks about its ability to continue to jack up rates, to continue to put pressure on working families around Brisbane, to continue to put pressure on housing affordability and continue to put pressure on rental affordability. Because if you're, if you're jacking up rates to the cap and that might be at seven and a half per cent in a lot of suburbs this year to fund the enormous amounts of debt that this Lord Mayor is running up, they're going to be passed on, they're going to be felt, felt by homeowners and it's going to be felt by renters right around Brisbane. The rates bill in Brisbane for the average suburban ratepayer has doubled since this LMP administration came to power, but what do people have to show for it? Nothing in the suburbs of Brisbane. It's getting worse and worse out there. Item J is the, the lease at Kangaroo Point, have that somewhere. This is something that council entered into twenty years ago, I believe it was, and is an important lease that council has, so we will be supporting this. It's a pretty good rate at three thousand dollars per annum for a further twenty-one years, so it's something that we will be supporting today.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. And just briefly on item A, there's an approximate reduction, councillors, in the number of hours we are meeting, and that's proposed today to be five hours, not five days, not a week, five hours. There will still be unlimited opportunities for councillors to speak. Now, I was thinking about this, and I note with interest today that the Labor Federal Government has reduced the Senate's estimates hearing not by five hours, but by twenty-five per cent. So, how do you spell hypocrisy? They should look at, thank you, they should look at their federal mates, they should look at the state who also didn't start their meetings until late February this year. How dare they come in here and accuse us?
Councillor Johnson, please.
Mr Chair, item E is the second budget review. The Lord Mayor foreshadowed this review in the chamber last week. It's an important opportunity to update our community on, on their council's finances, noting the challenges that the external environment has thrown our way this year, in addition to the immediate and ongoing challenges that have been triggered by the pandemic. Mr Chair, we mustn't forget that the pandemic cost this council over two hundred million dollars in direct costs and foregone revenue. The pandemic, together with the Russian invasion of Ukraine, has impacted the global economy in a number of ways, and this flows through to council, just like all other levels of government, the private sector and our households. We have seen impacts from supply chain disruptions associated with world events, economic conditions and market volatility impacting council's costs of operations and capital programme delivery. Mr Chair, we have a tight labour market impacting council labour and contracted works. And of course, we have contractual, contractual cost escalations and price escalations across a number of key materials and services. Locally, and indeed across the nation, flooding has compounded challenges in terms of materials and labour availability and costs. We are still projecting that the total cost of council, to, sorry, the total cost to council of the floods earlier this year will be over three hundred million dollars. So, it is clear, Mr Chair, that we are living in challenging times, and it's important to bring forward this review to the chamber today and reflect on the impact that these conditions will have on our budget. In this budget review, our operating capability surplus decreases by fifty-seven point seven million dollars. Revenue is materially unchanged, with submissions resulting in a net increase of under a million dollars. Expenses have increased by nearly sixty million, with about half of that as a result of cost escalations. Our electricity costs have increased by eleven million dollars. Fuel costs have increased by one and a half million, and our price escalation estimates for waste contracts are over seven million dollars. As the Lord Mayor has discussed in this place, cost escalation on our capital projects, both large and small, will have an impact in coming years. In this review, the net impact of the review increases to our capital spend of six point three million this financial year and a hundred and nineteen point four million and one hundred and twenty-three point seven million in the two following years. These challenges are not unique to council, but they are challenges that we must deal with in the interests of delivering the infrastructure and services that our growing city needs. Because of years of careful financial management, we're in a far better position to manage the challenges than we would have been if we had taken the advice of those opposite. It should be remembered, Mr Chair, that the Labor Party criticised the Schrinner Council for running a surplus during the pandemic. Cameron Dick complained that, quote, "Council didn't even go into deficit as if it was a bad thing." By carefully managing the budget over the past decade, we are in a far better position today and we can continue to deliver the projects that our residents expect. Now, through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Cassidy, regarding changes in programmes two and five. In programme two, these are largely due to project rephrasing, not cuts, projects rephasing. This is necessary changes in timing. Now, in programme five, in programme five, Mr Chair, it's a change in accounting treatments from CapEx to OpEx. Now, I'm sure that this will be a disappointment to councillor Cassidy and his fear campaign, and I'm sure he won't let the truth get in the way, but those are the facts, Mr Chair. Item F is the outcome of Brisbane City Council's credit review. Council is required to submit an annual credit review of its undertaken by Queensland Treasury Corporation as part of the approval for our annual borrowing programme to deliver capital projects. The credit review undertaken by QTC is a similar process to that undertaken by the credit rating agencies such as Moody's and S&amp;P Global, being an independent assessment on council's long-term financial sustainability and ability to service current and future debt obligations. The credit review assesses council's creditworthiness and provides a recommendation to the state for council's proposed annual borrowing programme. QTC reviews council's forecasting assumptions and key financial factors such as operating performance, serviceability, leverage, liquidity and asset sustainability. QTC also conducts sensitivity analysis on the forecast financials and a domestic and global peer comparison to understand relative leverage and debt servicing capacity. Consideration is also given to qualitative factors affecting council's financial sustainability, such as regional economic outlooks and key business, operational and financial risks. Based on this assessment, QTC assigns a credit rating between very strong and distressed and a ratings outlook of either neutral, positive, negative or developing. As set out in the papers, Mr Chair, we are pleased to report that council has maintained a strong credit rating with a neutral outlook for the tenth consecutive year. The Schrinner Council has a proven track record of sensible financial management. Responsible management is not something that is easy and it is not something that is always popular. It's something which requires leadership and it requires hard work, and the financial position of council is the product of many years of hard work. Our strong operating performance, capable management and continuous delivery of major projects continues to be a key factor in our, in the maintenance of a strong rating. I would really like to place on record my thanks to the corporate finance team for their continued hard work and dedication to our city, which has delivered this great result. Finally, Mr Chair, item J is the lease of land at thirty-four B Amesbury Street, Kangaroo Point. This is land which council has leased from the Queensland Government Department of Resources since two thousand and two. The land houses wharf structures over the river next to the pathway to Kangaroo Point Cliffs Park and the naval stores building, and council has, as I mentioned earlier, leased this for some time. The lease is required to maintain the existing use of the wharf structure, and it seeks approval for a new twenty-one-year lease commencing fourteenth of March next year and expiring in March twenty forty-four. And I commend it to the And I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you. Further debate? councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. Can you just clarify which items we're speaking on at the moment?
Currently, A, D, E, F, J.
That's right. Thanks. Cheers. Yeah, just a few quick comments on the relevant items. With item A and the council meeting dates, I do share concerns about the reduction in the number of meetings. I think councillor Cunningham was wrong to imply that this is not a significant change. I think I heard her through you, Chair, say that we have unlimited opportunities to speak at council meetings, and we don't. We only get to speak once in general business, and other than that, we can only speak to the particular items that have been put on the agenda by the LMP. So the LMP controls the agenda, they control what we're allowed to talk about, except for one comment in general business each week. As opposition councillors, we also only get to ask a few questions in question time each council meeting. So cutting further meetings means fewer opportunities to ask questions of the administration in question time, and it means fewer opportunities to raise issues of importance to our residents in general business. So I don't think this is a small thing. I don't think it's the end of the world. I'm not going to cry about the democratic sky falling in or whatever, but I do think there's a reduction in accountability by reducing the number of public meetings, and I think that's something that residents ought to be concerned about. Just on the budget review and councillor Cassidy's comments about rate increases, I don't want to quibble too much because I share a lot of the concerns he's raised, but I don't think there's any hard evidence that increasing rates necessarily leads to higher rents for renters. I know there's a lot of commentary around that from certain landlords, and it's frequently cited by the property council as an argument against increasing rates, but I think we should be cautious about accepting that at face value. If, for example, a landlord who's negative geared finds that their rates bill is increasing, most likely they just claim that as an additional deduction. There's no strong evidence that I'm aware of that increasing rates does generally, increased rates do generally get passed on to tenants. There are many other factors that much more significantly impact in rent, and I think we should be concerned about those issues, and I'm very, very concerned about rising rents in this city. I think both the major parties have done a very poor job of protecting the rights of renters. But if councillor Cassidy does have any hard economic data on how or to what extent increases in rates are passed on as increased rents, I'd be interested in hearing that because I think a lot of landlords cry poor about that, and they say, "Oh, if you put our rates up, we're going to pass it on to renters." But that's not really how things work in practice, in my experience at least, and I think we should be very cautious about that, because I think sometimes there is a case for charging particularly property investors higher rates, as distinct from owner occupiers. And I don't want to go into a long debate right now about what rates are appropriate for what categories of land use, but I think it would be perhaps politically unwise to back oneself into a corner where you oppose any kind of rates increase for any class of properties, when the reality is that, for example, short-term accommodation investment properties are still underrated. The rates are nowhere near high enough at the moment for properties that are rented out as transitory accommodation, and I think we should be increasing those rates. And I think increasing those rates would not result in higher costs for short-term accommodation that's provided by Airbnb. I think the investors would just absorb that loss. I might just also really briefly say with item J, the lease at Kangaroo Point, I don't have any concerns about this, but it would have been nice to see just a little bit more detail in the papers about the lease, and particularly I would have liked a little bit more information about who bears what maintenance obligations. I know that that structure is getting pretty old, and I assume there's going to be debates at some point in the next 21 years of that lease life, that there'll be debates about whether state government or the council is responsible for repairing cracked timbers or what happens the next time it's damaged in a flood. And I assume those details have been worked out somewhere, but they don't appear to be in the papers that have been provided to us. So I think if we're being asked to vote on a lease for such a significant period of time, a little bit more clarity and a bit more detail in the relevant report or in the relevant item explaining who is going to be responsible for maintaining what would have been greatly appreciated and would have given me just a little bit more confidence about supporting that one, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any further debate? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I just rise to speak on item A, and I'll take on notice, and I didn't ask you for your ruling, but, you know, we just sit here and listen to councillor Cassidy saying liar, liar, liar continually. They'll jump immediately when I say this, but councillor Cassidy, you simply cannot be believed in anything you say in this place. You just said, only a couple of years ago, there were 32 meetings of this council. Let's go back to the actual meetings of this council. 2021, there was 29. In 20, there was 23. It's an election year. 2019, there was 29. 2018, there was 29. 2017, there was 29. 2016, there was 24. It was an election year. 2015, there was 29. 2014 was 29. How much farther back do I have to go? Oh, over 10 years. They're the first ones to complain when we bring anything up that's over 10 years. And this is not counting the budget meetings that we have, always two budget meetings, if not three sometimes with an extraordinary, which is probably where he's extrapolated his always 32 meetings in a year. Councillor Cassidy, you're a liar.
Further debate?
Point of order, Mr Chairman. I've been expelled for calling a councillor a liar. I've had my name noted in the minutes. Just a moment, if that's okay, please. Now, councillor Murphy has just been shouting out across the chamber, "Who cares? No one cares." I care because the rules are applied in one way to me and not to other councillors in this place. Mr Chairman, councillor Adams has called councillor Cassidy a liar. That is grounds for inappropriate conduct in the minutes. Will you apply the law in the same way to her as you do to me?
Deputy Mayor? I ask that you withdraw those comments, please.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Look, I will definitely withdraw that councillor Cassidy is a liar. I didn't want to bundle the others into it, so I will just say the AOP lie.
Thank you for withdrawing those comments. Further debate? councillor Johnston.
Yes, just on the point of order, the comments from councillor Murphy, will they be withdrawn as well?
Councillor Murphy, could I ask you not to interject across the floor, please, and observe the general good behaviour of this chamber, please? councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on items A, possibly D, E and F. Firstly, with respect to the council meeting dates for 2023, we know, we know that the LMP in this council are in trouble when they start quoting the Labor Party to justify their own bad behaviour. And I'm sure Labor are going to be going, "Oh, hang on." But this is what happens. When they get desperate, they will go down and they will roar on the bad behaviour of the Labor Party at other levels of government to justify their own bad behaviour. Without question, we are seeing the LMP trying to hide accountability in the running of this city from councillors and from the city of Brisbane, from the people of Brisbane. That is what they are doing. Now, councillor Cunningham stood up and said, "We get five hours to have a chat. There's not a time limit on council." But perhaps she just can't handle the 25 minutes she has to do at ENC as part of her role as the Finance Chairman.
councillor Johnston, can I ask you to refer to councillors by their proper title, please?
I'm sorry?
Could I ask you to refer to councillors by their title, not by her or she? Thank you.
What?
That's one of the meetings' local laws.
I did say councillor Cunningham.
Yeah?
So I'm sorry, you're saying we can't say she, he, they? Just to be clear on your rule here, because if that's where you want to go, that's all we can do. Is that your rule?
councillor Johnston, that ruling has been made previously. Thank you.
Okay. You're sure you want to do that? Just giving the chance to back the buck up now.
councillor Johnston, you have the floor if you'd like to continue.
All righto. Councillor Cunningham obviously has a little bit too much trouble handling the extra 25 minutes a week with ENC, but let me be clear, the LMP are cutting back council meetings. When I started, they were around 30 a year. It's now, went down to 29, and now it is down to 28. The impact of that is there is less scrutiny of this council administration by the people of Brisbane and by the democratically elected councillors. You combine that with the way in which this LMP administration has delegated decision-making to unelected council officers. You combine that with the level of extraordinary secrecy that they're bringing in with respect to the cost of projects. There are hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of ratepayers' money that is being bandied around by the LMP council, and they don't want anyone to know. It's secret, it's confidential, we can't talk about it. I mean, there's an ATM now down in the lobby of City Hall. They're treating the ratepayers of Brisbane like an ATM machine. It is appalling to watch what this LMP administration is doing to the good governance of this city, and taking away opportunities to debate the issues of the day weakens the administration and governance of our city. I mean, councillor Cunningham stood up and said that the new Albanese government was having less sittings, so, you know, justifying their own behaviour. That's appalling. That is just appalling. It is a bad decision, and I don't support it. We are paid to be here to make decisions, that's why I don't support delegations. We are paid to turn up and discuss the business of the city, and this administration has changed the meetings' local laws multiple times since I've been a councillor to restrict our ability to do that, to restrict it, and it's still going on today. It is shameful behaviour by the LMP who are tired, out of touch and unaccountable. Now, with respect to the Sandgate District neighbourhood plan, I think this is where the LMP have just, they just cannot, they cannot in their tiny minds work out that if we don't agree with them, if we don't agree with them, if we have other ideas about what should happen, opposing the plan means you're against all development. That's what they're trying to say. Now, that is absolutely not the case. When the neighbourhood plan for my area went through, we were very clear. This administration didn't change a single thing, not a single thing, to reflect the views of hundreds and hundreds of residents. But this LMP administration now cannot stand somebody else with an alternate idea. They immediately oppose that as, "You don't support us." Well, guess what? You are getting these neighbourhood plans wrong. The adverse impacts are being felt in communities around the city, and it is going to catch up with you the hard way. It is going to catch up with you. The Queensland Treasury Corporation City Council Credit Review. Firstly, QTC is not an independent organisation from council. They are our financial enablers, so to speak, and they think Brisbane City Council is doing a cracking job. So we will agree with the Lord Mayor. There's no question they think that council's rolling along okay, but why is it rolling along okay? Let's have a little look see. The strong rating reflects BCC's financial profile and operating results. The rating is underpinned by BCC's diverse revenue stream, which provide a high degree of financial flexibility, and importantly here, their capacity and willingness to adjust rates to maintain sufficient revenue to fund operations and service debt. Ching ching, ching ching. In the libraries, we're going to start seeing ATM machines, maybe. In the pools, we're going to start seeing ATM machines. This administration wants to put ATM machines in everywhere because the 7% a year residential cap on rates that they've been jacking up rates, not 3.5%, like this Lord Mayor says. In my ward, there were multiple suburbs that hit the rates cap at 7%, and over the time that I've been a councillor, rates have doubled under the LMP. You don't need to go back and look at the ancient history of the Labor Party, who I'm sure got it wrong too. It's this LMP administration that are profligate, irresponsible and are treating the residents of Brisbane like a cash cow. And it is absolutely being endorsed by the QTC because they want to safeguard their investment in us, because where do we get our money from? The Queensland State Government. So this is the thing that the Lord Mayor will not tell you. He will not tell you that rates are going to continue to go up to support the work that the LMP are doing here. And it's not like they're spending the money well, it's not like they're spending the money in a responsible way. We're seeing half a billion dollars of project disasters being rushed through the council today, and we can't even talk about the figures. They're secret, they've been redacted. The LMP don't want people to know. These major projects around the city are blowing out. It's the war in Ukraine. It's okay. It's the floods. These things are happening all the time. I've been here for 14 years. It's the second lot of floods. They're going to keep happening. You think Brisbane City Council Finance Chairs, and there's multiple of them sitting here, I think the Lord Mayor's had a go at it, councillor Cunningham's had a go at it, councillor Adams had a go at it, councillor Adam Allen's had a go at it. I think that might be it. I don't know that anybody else has been Finance Chair, but they're not learning. They're not learning, they're not adjusting. They're doing the same things that are getting our city into financial strife time and time again. Now, the Lord Mayor will tell you, as he did today, trying to justify these cost blowout on these seven major projects, "Oh, it's okay, we've got a little bit of a surplus. It's fine, there's a surplus." What the Lord Mayor does not want to tell you is, he has blown out the credit card, he's taken on second and third and fourth mortgages, and the cost of debt for every single person in Brisbane is skyrocketing. It is absolutely skyrocketing. This year, it's about, let me just pull it out, this year, it is 2,200. Next year, it's per person, per person in Brisbane. Next year, it's going to bump up to 2,655. Then next year, 2,814. It is blowing out. It's money on the credit card, it's money that we've borrowed, and this LMP administration, it's their dirty secret that they don't want to talk about because they're not going to be responsible for paying it back.
councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Any further debate on these items? councillor Adam, councillor Adam Allen, thank you, over there.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I wish to join the debate on item C, the Sandgate District Neighbourhood Plan. Since March 2019, council has been working with the community and local residents in and around Sandgate, Deegan and Shauncliff to update the Sandgate District Neighbourhood Plan. This neighbourhood plan will guide future planning and development in the area and continue to support inclusive housing choices to be located close to public transport and centres. It also supports the economic activity within Sandgate. Mr Chair, I pondered today about just how the opposition would vote on this neighbourhood plan, but I'm not really surprised that councillor Cassidy has indicated today that his side of the chamber will not be supporting this neighbourhood plan. As the Lord Mayor said earlier, they have voted against 14 neighbourhood plans since 2016. Across these 14 neighbourhood plans, there is a potential to provide an additional 25,000 dwellings. 25,000 additional dwellings not supported by the opposition. It seems like the opposition want to pick a fight with this side of the chamber for no other reason than simply voting against the Shrima Council. Yet when good planning scheme changes come through the chamber, changes that will lead to housing supply, diversity and choice, and they are encouraged to support them, they have not done so. Mr Chair, I'm not surprised, I'm just disappointed. And I did find it really interesting when councillor Cassidy spoke earlier, and he said that he'd provided constructive feedback at every stage of the process. Well, the truth is that he's actually worked actively against the process. He hasn't provided local leadership. He talks about getting a better outcome, but he hasn't provided local leadership. He hasn't taken the community with him. On one end of the spectrum, he's got people who don't want any change. On the other end of the spectrum, he's got people who want significant change, and he hasn't provided guidance to those groups. He hasn't achieved the outcomes that he sought because he hasn't really been... He hasn't achieved the outcomes that he sought because he hasn't really been engaged in the process. So, in the context of this neighbourhood plan, he didn't provide a formal submission which might outline some of his concerns. He went to briefings and ultimately, when he had his final briefing, he just noted it. So, you know, at the end of the day, you can't stand up in the chamber and have a crack at the process without actually having provided leadership on the ground. And ultimately, in this case, councillor Cassidy has let his community down. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Sorry, any further debate on these items? Okay. We'll move to the vote on items A, D and E, that was the first voting block, A, D and E. All in favour of items A, D and E, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillors Cassidy and Cook. Please ring the bells, ayes to my right, noes to the left. Thank you. Please close the hours. Clarks, good result?
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 6 against.
Thank you. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillors, we now move to debate on items B and C, items B and C. Lord Mayor.
Sorry? Sorry? A point of order, Mr Chair, I just, can you check my memory? I recalled that for debate and vote, it was A, D, E, I and J, but then we separated A, D, E and I and J.
A, D.
Excuse me, A, D, E were one vote and then F and J was the other vote, and we just haven't concluded that second vote yet.
Okay, my apologies, okay. Councillors, we now move to the vote on items F and J. Items F and J. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. And the next voting block was G, H, I and K. Please, okay, I'm trying. Thank you. Councillors, we move to the debate on items B and C, items B and C. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Items B and C are the LGIP, Local Government Infrastructure Plan, and the LTIP, Long-Term Infrastructure Plan. In relation to, I'm not sure if it was answered before, there was a question from councillor Johnston about state government planning and priority development areas. We certainly do take into account the known information about expected growth, but that information is obviously subject to change. We don't have control over priority development areas. They can change quite significantly from one year to another based on the state government's priorities, but we do try and take into account all the information that is known. I would also point out though that these plans are about collecting infrastructure charges to help support investment in infrastructure. And with a state priority development area, we do not get any charges. And so there's significant chunks of the city where no contribution at all comes to council for the provision of infrastructure. And there is a significant issue that grows and grows each year where the state government allows significant increases in growth and development without appropriate provision of infrastructure or without the provision of infrastructure charges to help support investment in infrastructure. So, we do take into account councillor Johnson what is known, but that is subject to change over time as state government planning requirements change. Item B is the LGIP, the Local Government Infrastructure Plan. This amendment is the five-yearly review. We have expanded the planning horizon to 15 years from 2021 to 2036. As I said, having an LGIP allows council to continue levying infrastructure charges for approved new developments as well as conditioning future trunk infrastructure. Now, there are cases where an applicant or a builder will provide the infrastructure themselves, and then there are cases where government such as council will build the infrastructure. So there's two different options here and the LGIP allows for both options. In cases where council builds the infrastructure, the funds collected from each new development proposal helps fund that, but it is far from a source that covers the majority of the cost of building infrastructure. In fact, it only covers a fraction of the cost of building infrastructure. And in recent times, with the escalation of cost in building infrastructure, we haven't seen anywhere near the increase in infrastructure charges to allow us to even cover the cost. So, we are going backwards this year significantly when it comes to our ability to provide infrastructure going forward with the infrastructure charges cap that's in place. And so, as costs escalate, far more than inflation, every year, the charges that come in through developments are, in real terms, going backwards. So, not a good outcome, and obviously we've advocated previously for a change to the way that infrastructure charges are capped and calculated and the way that those are escalated. They should be more reflective of increases in the price of building things than they are at the moment because the current cap does not take into account those major cost increases that we're seeing in building infrastructure. But, having said that, this plan does allow us to collect charges. To put it in perspective, on average, we are seeing around $200 million per annum going into trunk infrastructure investment through LGIP projects, but that represents only a portion of the more than a billion dollars we're spending this year, for example. And in the past, even when we've seen lower levels of infrastructure investment, the infrastructure charges that have come in have only covered a fraction of the cost. So, if anyone is suggesting or anyone suggests in this debate that this list in front of us represents the only infrastructure investment we're making, it's simply not true. This is just a list of projects that we will collect charges towards but that we have to significantly top up, but it is also far from the only list of projects that we will be building. There are many other projects that we invest in each year and this is just a part of the equation. The amendment will see trunk infrastructure including transport, stormwater, public parks and land for communities facilities identified. It will see the capital expenditure increase by 1.2 billion within this 15-year period, once again, only a fraction of what we'll be spending. Since the LGIP was adopted into the city plan in 2018, council has facilitated the delivery of more than 200 trunk infrastructure items across the city, either through council-led initiatives or developer-led construction. This financial year will also continue to deliver suburban and metropolitan trunk projects including the Mogul Road Corridor upgrade, Green Bridges and Victoria Park projects. In the past, we've seen contributions towards some of our major infrastructure including the Kingston Smith Drive upgrade opposed by Labor, Winham and Litton Road upgrades and Telegraph Road, as well as the district and metropolitan park upgrades at Bridgeman Downs, Chirmside, Darra, Mount Cootha, Palara, Sandgate, West End, Windsor, Waver Heights, to name just a few. Item C, the Long-Term Infrastructure Plan, is primarily about the identification of land that needs to be preserved for future infrastructure or public open space, including infrastructure such as roads, stormwater and the provision of parkland. Now, in the long-term infrastructure timeframe, we are not able to collect charges in this longer-term timeframe, but we are able to designate land for preservation for future infrastructure. So this has the primary purpose of setting aside land that will be needed for future infrastructure. And so, the LTIP and the LGIP are important documents to go hand-in-hand with the future of our city and identifying land for future use is really important. Because the earlier it is identified, the earlier it is set aside, the more affordable the provision of infrastructure will be for the people of Brisbane. Land is not getting any cheaper, every year it increases in value, and so if it can be identified early, in this case on a long-term horizon, that will save ratepayers significantly down the track when the infrastructure is built. The LTIP amendment today provides updates for our plan, those going beyond 2036. There are 14 new items going into the LTIP as part of this amendment. Additionally, there are 141 projects being removed from the LTIP and being brought forward into the LGIP. So these are projects that were previously in the long-term plan that are being put into the LGIP, which is the current plan, and so they're being moved forward and brought into the timeframe where not only we're looking at delivery but also where we can collect charges from new developments towards them as well. So, this is about, this particular long-term plan is about future-proofing and setting aside land, as I've said, and I commend these two items to the chamber.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Hutton.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, which only commences when councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Second. Thank you, have a motion for an afternoon tea break, moved by councillors Hutton and Adam and all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. Further debates on items B and C? Councillor Johnston.
Ah, yes, excuse me, thank you, arise to speak on items B and C, the LGIP and the LTIP. Unfortunately, my experience of city planning in this place is council forcing change on to communities that don't support it and then ripping away the infrastructure that the community has needed for more than two decades. That's our experience of the LGIP and the LTIP, particularly with the last amendments that went through a few years ago. The stormwater drainage upgrades that are desperately needed in Uronga were completely removed, backflow valves aren't listed. Stormwater drainage all around this city desperately needs to be upgraded. And it's really disappointing to see that the LNP administration still isn't getting it. What I understand from the changes to this plan, suburbs like Palara and Bridgeman Downs are getting prioritised. I believe the language is a priority infrastructure area, and they may not be the only ones, but they're the two that stick out to me. It's very interesting, I went and had a look at the population forecast for residential dwellings that's in the LGIP, and sadly, the suburb of Urongpili, which was essentially 800 houses, that over the next few years is going to be something like 3,000 houses, doesn't even rate a mention, not even listed. We're not seeing any infrastructure going in there. There's a petition later today calling on council to do a road upgrade that would service that area, but no, there's no money to do that because it's not a priority. It's not a priority because it's not even listed in the population forecasts for modelling to deliver the LGIP and the LTIP. That's how bad this administration is. So I just want to give people some idea, just some comparisons on the modelling, because what we're seeing is this administration absolutely not getting that right. Currently, I'm going to give you Bridgeman Downs. So, in 2018, there were 3,145 private dwellings. By 2031, that'll be up to 4,431. And this new ultimate figure, sort of over the full year of the life plus plus, it's forecast to go up to 6,978. So that's Bridgeman Downs. Palara, 2,209 in 2008, 2031, 3,431. And the ultimate figure, the blowout 15-year figure plus, 6,025. So let's compare that to Uronga, the suburb of Uronga, little old suburb of Uronga, not, doesn't have a neighbourhood plan, doesn't have any infrastructure listed on the LGIP or the LTIP, oh no, there's some on the LTIP. It's had massive new housing developments go in, 400 people in a retirement village that floods, another 250 new dwellings on the old parkland site at the RSPCA, huge amounts of infill through Uronga West. There's a priority development area where we're going to see around 600 new homes on what was a school site. What are we seeing in Uronga? So currently, 2018, 4,641 private dwellings. By 2031, that's estimated to rise to 5,278. And the blowout figure of this ultimate figure that's referred to is 7,132 private dwellings. That's more than the priority infrastructure area of Bridgeman Downs. That's more than the priority area of Palara, more by quite a bit. Is there any infrastructure to support the ongoing growth that has happened over the last decade plus in Uronga and that is clearly continuing to happen both at the state and the private development? There is literally nothing, not a thing. What we're seeing with this LTIP is the council feathering its own nest. It's fascinating to me that the report indicates that one of the reasons to update the plan is to put last year's infrastructure from the budget into the LGIP and the LTIP. So, council's planning document, the Local Government Infrastructure Plan, which is one of several, is supposed to inform the annual operating plan and the annual budget, but it's the other way around. And that's because this administration, not only can they not manage infrastructure projects and service delivery in this city, they are killing communities with bad planning. Bad planning that puts high-rise in areas where the roads can't sustain it, bad planning that puts high-rise on parks, bad planning that sees high-rise going Bad planning that sees high-rise going into areas that flood and elderly vulnerable people in areas that flood. Bad planning that sees, uh, units going up with no additional infrastructure like stormwater drainage or additional parkland, or even fixing up one-lane rail bridges that are the only way in and out of a community in times of emergency like a flood. There's not a single cent going to support these communities. The infrastructure that's been listed for a suburb like Yorongah and Yorongpili, which is not even listed, which are experiencing extraordinary growth, is essentially non-existent. Not to mention Oxley, not to mention Sherwood, where we've had, I think it's close to 1,000 new dwellings, uh, under the neighbourhood plan. Council's retrospectively put a bit of money in to do some work in the arboretum, and they're about two years behind. Do you know what they put in? A baby and me swing, and it took them a year to do it. It is extraordinary to watch how badly this council is managing the planning process. Yet again, my community will tell this council what it needs. This LNP administration refuses to listen to the community, and they will continue to pay the price, uh, by failing to do so. Feathering the nests of places like Brackenridge Ward or, uh, out there at, um, Callanvale Ward, where there are less predicted homes than in a place like Yorongah, should be a lesson to everybody in this community that the LNP are only governing for themselves, they are not interested in governing for everybody in this city, they are not interested in supporting development with good infrastructure and necessary infrastructure, like road upgrades, cycling upgrades, stormwater upgrades, pedestrian pathway upgrades, new community facilities, uh, and new park and recreational areas. It is appalling to see the impact of the bad planning that this administration has forced on this council pretty much since I was, since I've been here. This process started, uh, back in, well, actually, the very, one of the very first meetings I went to as a councillor in, uh, June 2008 was the release of the draft Sherwood Graceville Neighbourhood Plan. So I hadn't been involved in any of it before that. The former councillor Jane Prentice had ticked off five stories, she's just not told anybody else. It was, it's, it's just wrong. This administration is letting our city down, uh, and it is absolutely contrary to the ethics, uh, and the intent of what they should be doing, which is governing for everyone in the city. So just to be clear again, under this LNP administration, the suburbs that are recognised as priority infrastructure houses will, over, uh, sorry, priority infrastructure areas like, um, Bridgeman Downs and Palara, are going to have less houses in them than a suburb that has been neglected for decades, continues to experience high growth, continues to flood, and is continuing to be ignored by the LNP administration, and that's a suburb like Yorongah. That's one of 10 that I represent that this administration has ignored, forgotten, and treated with such disrespect, such disrespect. I'll be making it very clear to my residents at this next election that the LNP do not deserve their support. Every single resident in my ward speaks to me and says, who should I vote for for Lord Mayor? I've, uh, I've stayed out of it, I've let people decide, uh, but I can say very clearly now that there is no way I'll be telling them that they should be considering re-electing this LNP government because they won't support our community.
Further speakers, councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Chair, I rise to speak on items B and C. And this is a very important component of the E and C today because out in the suburb of Palara in particular, we don't talk about predicted growth, we actually talk about actual growth. And quite predominantly, in one of the small sections of Palara, which was part of the Paradise Wetlands Neighbourhood Plan, there are over 700 houses that have been built there recently. So fast is the growth rate that on the 10th of September, there was a small pocket of an estate, one of the stages, that was released to the actual new owners so that they could come out. It was all plan sealed, they got their, to have their photo on the block. 10th of September, we were out there doing a welcome to the neighbourhood. And can I say that two months later, on that little component of that stage of that estate, there were 45 houses at frame stage? That is how fast houses are popping up through the suburb of Palara. We're not talking about thousands coming years down the track. Since March 2020, when Palara came back into my ward, I can say that there are so many houses that have been constructed. We're not talking about down-the-track predictions, forecasts, we are talking about actuals, actual houses that have been built, actual residents who have moved in, and these are our new neighbours. And that is why it is important, and I know councillor Davis, that through you, Mr. Chair, that we have been working on the proposals for the open space network corridor plan to build in the bikeways, to build in the drainage, to assist all of that new development. Now, what is extremely important is, as part of that open space network corridor, is that instead of having kids riding from one end of Palara from their homes up to where the school is, we will be putting in a pedestrian walkway and a pedestrian bikeway, and that will serve to help, and I'll just note this for active school travel purposes, seeing as we had an active school travel pro, um, presentation this morning, that will allow those young children to ride their bikes or walk with family members up to the school in a safe manner of safety away from the major corridor road, which is Ritchie Road. Now, it is really interesting that this is a rapidly growing community in our city of Brisbane. And I will repeat that. It is a rapidly growing community, present tense. We're not talking about the future, we are talking about right now. And you only have to compare to the actuals of what's happening to the predictions. Now, when the new Palara State School was built as part of the Lower Oxley Creek South Neighbourhood Plan, it was predicted that in the year 2025, there were anticipated to be 725 students attending that school. Well, the actual figure on day eight this year was 1,038. The expected figure based on sibling enrolments only for 2023, so in a couple of months' time, is going to be 1,150. So that's nearly 50% above what was anticipated to actually occur by the year 2025. So for those of you who can do the maths, when you're actually getting more students going into a school and the growth is going through the roof, that also means that there are more people living in that school catchment area. Therefore, there is growth in that suburb that is substantiated. And for the officers behind the scenes who work very diligently in comparing the population growths, but also learning about what is actually happening out there to make these decisions as to what they propose for moving out of the L-Tip into the LGIP to cater for that rapidly growing community, they have done an extremely good job because the bikeways that we will see coming online as part of bringing it forward into the LGIP are going to benefit so many families. And councillor Davis, I know that you've been working with me on the Palara District sports fields and how we take that forward. Now, a lot of the land acquisition has been done, and on the weekend we had a big community information day, and people are very, very proactive about having a say about what they want to see. And they are very supportive of sports like volleyball, badminton, footsle, bad, um, basketball. So they're the indoor sports that they want, but they also want to see netball and, um, soccer outside, as well as, um, an outdoor volleyball court, so, and some cricket nets. So we have a very long, um, wishlist, uh, councillor Davis, through you, Mr. Chair, but there is a lot of enthusiasm for the infrastructure that needs to come on board. And in particular, I will mention the roads. So at the moment, we have Stage 1A that has just been completed on the Ritchie Road Corridor project. Stage 1B is about to commence, and we also did consultation with that on the weekend. And then, as we progress through with the LGIP, we will be able to facilitate the next stages of those, those projects. Now, I do acknowledge the federal government in supporting us with the funding for Stage 1A and 1B, but there is a lot of work to be done through there, and we are working through with the council officers to make sure all the supplementary roads that feed into those main feeder roads are supported and, um, enhanced, as well as having this major corridor road as we've got all of that growth. Because, as many people understand, you don't lay a driveway and then dig it up to lay your water and dig it up again to lay your sewerage and then dig it up again to put your electricity in. You do the foundations first, and then you put your driveway in after when you're building a house. A similar proposal, or a similar concept, is what happens when we're looking at the wider community. Now, I know that, um, in regards to the LGIP, there are quite a number of culverts, natural channels, new pipes, and wetlands that are incorporated not only into the local streets, but importantly into our open space network corridor. So this is where we are synergistically looking at better outcomes for the community from not only a drainage perspective, not only a pedestrian and cycling, um, perspective, but also an amenity and a lifestyle perspective. So there's a lot of benefits that will come out of this, um, transfer, and particularly, I know that we are dealing with actual population increases in this rapidly growing community here and now, and that is why I wholeheartedly commend items B and C to this chamber because this is needed by the Palara community here and now. Thank you.
Further debate on B and C? Councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on these items. And what, uh, councillor Owen just described there is, um, you know, the reason the community out that way were so disappointed that the local council had to be dragged kicking and screaming to put in six bus stops, uh, to extend public transport services, very, very basic bus stops. Uh, we know it's a growing community and support the provision of infrastructure, but when they're so poorly represented, and it's no wonder, uh, those residents reach out right across the city to get some help. Um, the two clauses together, L-Tip and LGIP, um, the, the finish line on this, um, these documents have been pushed back another 10 years now to 2036. It will be a year ago tomorrow, uh, when these same items came to council, also pushing back the timeline on a whole range of, um, of infrastructure projects right around our city to cope, uh, with, um, increased development and population growth. If you look at, uh, if you look at this LNP Lord Mayor's track record when it comes to his own signature projects here in the inner city, you see those delays, uh, are all too common, and they have now, they have now been extended into the long-term infrastructure planning process, um, which is meant to deliver the infrastructure that our suburban communities right around Brisbane need as our city grows. We know that, uh, alongside, alongside this process, a housing strategy should be, uh, should be delivered as well to know how our city is going to grow, what it's going to look like in the future, how people will live and get around, and how they will be connected as a community in a series of suburban communities right around suburban Brisbane. But we still haven't seen, uh, any progress on that as well. So we see that there are, um, there are, as we've heard from administration councillors, that, that neighbourhood plans are being progressed because our city has to grow, but they ref- but they refuse to do a housing strategy, uh, in a, in a holistic way, um, to see how all those neighbourhoods are going to be connected, uh, where those, where those growth pressures will be felt right across our city, uh, and how we will manage that growth in providing the infrastructure that's needed. As we've seen over the last 12 months, this LNP administration has gone through a process here through the LGIP and the L-Tip to continue to push projects back, uh, to, to remove items from the LGIP and to push the horizon for their delivery, the ones that remain in there, further and further down the line. So much of this infrastructure, uh, over the next 10 years, uh, that is needed ahead of the Olympic and Paralympic Games now won't be delivered. Those games will have come and gone, uh, by half a decade before some of these things are looked at. And then we just know on the LNP's track record, if, if, if they were still in administration in five years' time, they would continue to push these down the road. But I think people are wising up. People are certainly, uh, wising up to, uh, this LNP administration. They're identifying out in their communities that while they're paying more in rates than ever before, they're getting less in return. The Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor talked about, um, this LGIP not being the entire, um, programme of infrastructure that this council will need to provide, uh, and that's true, but it also shows that there's a billion-dollar deficit in funding for the infrastructure that is required as a result, um, of our rapidly growing communities. Now, sure, the infrastructure charge caps, um, do prevent that billion dollars in, in infrastructure, um, funding deficits to be met, so that has to be met through rates increases. That's, that's accepted, and that's the, that's the position we are in today, that's not going to change today with this. But what does change, the provision of suburban infrastructure, things like drainage and park upgrades and footpaths and roads and community facilities and upgrading sporting facilities and building new sporting facilities ahead of the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, what stops that from happening are massive blowouts on inner-city projects like we're seeing today, the $400 million blowout. So there's a billion-dollar deficit in the LGIP infrastructure projects. We now see five-plus billion dollars' worth of debt for projects that this Lord Mayor has mismanaged and mishandled in the inner city, but the suburbs continue to miss out. So they're missing out in the council budget from this LNP Lord Mayor, and now they're missing out, uh, in the LGIP and L-Tip budgets because of the political decisions this Lord Mayor has made, uh, in terms of his pet projects. So, you know, as rates continue to rise well and truly above, uh, the level they need to, to cover not only, not only basic infrastructure that's been left behind and those prices are soaring because of contracting out, we know that private contractors who are delivering road resurfacing projects in Brisbane, um, uh, costs are increasing by around, well, to council, to ratepayers, those costs are increasing around 25% at the moment. Uh, but the in-house, what's left of the in-house work is going up at a much, much smaller rate. So because of the political decisions of this LNP administration in contracting out basic work, we're seeing rates driven up. Because of the political decisions of this LNP administration in their mismanaged inner-city projects, we're seeing rates driven up. Uh, and because of their mismanagement of the long-term infrastructure plan and local government, um, infrastructure, um, uh, plan, that rates are going to be driven up to pay for these infrastructure projects because they're delayed and they're pushed back by 10 years, and costs increase. And the community continues to see a situation where they pay more and get less out in the suburbs. Uh, the, the people of Brisbane, uh, are really not getting very good value for money from this LNP administration, uh, and come March 2024, I think they're going to take it out on them.
Further speakers on items B and C? Any further speakers? Councillor Sri Ranganath? Oh, sorry, I'll take it from councillor Allen. Sorry, councillor Sri Ranganath had his hand up first.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, uh, wish to join the debate on items B and C. The Amendment 1B to the local government infrastructure plan and the local, the long-term infrastructure plans, these plans are set out to, um, help guide council to direct funds for the delivery of key infrastructure around the city. And, um, not surprisingly, this has to be done on a priority basis, and the funding is moved to those projects, uh, of greater need. And it includes things such as congestion, uh, congestion busting road projects, transport infrastructure that gets residents home quicker and safer, and also towards better parks, libraries, stormwater. And ultimately, we're delivering forth long-term vision for the future of our city. As we know it, Brisbane is growing rapidly, it's the fastest-growing capital city in Australia, and so the Srinagar Council is planning for the infrastructure we will need in the future and delivering it right now by increasing capital expenditure. by increasing capital expenditure by $1.2 billion for the period from 2021 to 2036. Specifically, the L-Gip aligns the city's future development with the infrastructure needed to support this growing population, whilst the LTIP preserves long-term land for open space and infrastructure corridors beyond the L-Gip planning horizon. Responding to both state government and industry feedback, this amendment also seeks to expand the planning horizon to 15 years. As the Lord Mayor mentioned, since the L-Gip was adopted in 2018, we have delivered over 200 trunk infrastructure items across the city. This includes 85 road network projects, 72 stormwatered trunk infrastructure items, new or upgraded parks, 29 of those, six bikeways, and three new ferry terminals. This equates to over $200 million per annum of trunk infrastructure investment. Last year, the council's expenditure on trunk infrastructure was $274 million. Now, I know both the opposition and councillor Sri Ranganathan have been critical of this administration for not spending enough on infrastructure. However, I would like to note that the Gabba Ward has the greatest number of L-Gip items through this amendment, 152 to be exact, including 73 new items. Additionally, the Gabba Ward has one of the largest total spends for any ward across the city with a total of $447 million. Additionally, in the suburb of Baruka, there has been an increase to $26 million, including projects like the Ipswich Road Corridor Upgrade and the Ipswich Road and Gainesbury Street Intersection Upgrade, projects I'm sure councillor Johnston would be supportive of, given her ongoing rhetoric about Ipswich Road. Winham West sees a planned expenditure of $89 million, and this includes both the Lindem Open Level Crossing and the Kianawar Road Corridor Upgrade. There is also an increase to $52 million in expenditure in the suburb of Morningside to construct the Morningside Riverwalk, as well as an extension to the Aquatic Centre. Mr. Chair, progressing these infrastructure plans will enable the council to fund and deliver the infrastructure that Brisbane needs to make it a livable, vibrant, and accessible city. And to the points that councillor Johnston made earlier, it's worth bearing in mind that a number of the locations she mentioned are actually state PDAs, and it's the state's responsibility to deliver infrastructure in those particular locations. And I would also note that the L-Gip is reviewed by an independent reviewer, and obviously that's a second set of eyes over how the funds are allocated and how we are aligning the L-Gip with the ministerial guidelines. So ultimately, the process is a thorough one. Councillor Johnston may not agree with all of the items there, but it is certainly a process that's based on priority. And to the point councillor Cassidy made about infrastructure charges, he acknowledged the shortfall that we get in infrastructure charges. This administration's had an ongoing discussion with the state about increasing infrastructure charges. They have a cap on it at the moment, so if councillor Cassidy wants to help in this regard, can I suggest he pops down the road to William Street and talks to the state about removing the infrastructure cap? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Thanks. Right to speak on the L-Gip and Long-Term Infrastructure Plan. I just thought I'd provide a few quick figures for context, because I think councillor Allen's right that there is a lot of projected or anticipated investment in the Gabba Ward, and my view is that it's still nowhere near enough. It's still nowhere near enough to cater for the rapid growth we're experiencing. So just for context, the suburb of Wollongaba, in the 2016 census, it had a population of 5,631, so 2016, 5,600 people in that suburb. That's jumped up to 8,600 people now. So that one suburb of Wollongaba has had an increase of over 3,000 people in basically my time in office. The suburb of West End, it's, back in 2016, West End had a population of 9,600. Guess how many that's what West End's population is now? It's 14,700. So we've got 3,000 more people in the suburb of Wollongaba, and we've got about 5,000 people in additional people in the suburb of West End. Moving to the suburb of South Brisbane, around South Bank, back in 2016 census, we had a population of 7,196. Now, the population of South Brisbane is up to 14,200. So just in those three suburbs, we've got an extra 3,000 people in Wollongaba, we've got about 5,000 extra people in West End, and about 7,000 people in South Brisbane. And I won't go on with examples of the other suburbs like Kangaroo Point, et cetera. But the point here is that we've experienced a huge amount of growth in population in the last couple of years, and I listened with interest to councillor Owen, because I can see that there's a lot of growth pressure out at Polara as well, but it's just as strong, if not I would argue quite a bit stronger, in the inner city. So it's certainly the case that we need more investment in infrastructure, but really, it comes down to a question of what kind of infrastructure. And the problem I'm continually seeing is that this council is still spending too much money on road widening projects that represent very poor value for money. So for example, in the L-Gip, there's mention of widening Montague Road in West End and redesigning some of those Montague Road intersections. The cost estimates for those projects in this draft document are far too low. The true cost of delivering those road widens will be hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars, because the Montague Road Corridor now has eight-to-10-storey high-density zoning all the way along it. So if the council wants to be acquiring two kilometres' worth of land that's zoned for 10-storey development, their property acquisition bill alone is going to be far more than what has been allocated in this L-Gip budget. But my point is that we shouldn't be spending that money on road widening in the first place, and that's the case whether we're talking about West End, or Ipswich Road, or other suburbs and neighbourhoods further out. Councillor Cassidy is right to point out that there's a shocking lag, or shortfall, or deficit in terms of provision of infrastructure and the failure to keep up with population growth. And certainly, one piece of the puzzle is the unreasonably low state government caps on infrastructure charges, and I welcome the fact that the LNP have shifted their position over time. I remember when I was first in this chamber, and I talked about removing that cap on infrastructure charges. Mayor Quirk at the time was very resistant to the idea and seemed to be opposed in the suggestion that the infrastructure charge caps would have to change or be removed. But since then, we've seen even the LNP have had to acknowledge the blunt reality that the infrastructure charge caps mean the money collected isn't even close to reflecting the true costs of delivering infrastructure for the area. But beyond that problem of infrastructure charge caps being too low, we are also just spending the money very inefficiently and ineffectively. We're spending it on projects that don't represent good value for money, and we're outsourcing to the private sector so much that that too is driving up costs, and I think is resulting in situations where projects which would be much cheaper to deliver in-house are continually blowing way out of budget. And I think a large part of that is private sector price gouging. But I guess I've said all this before, I don't really think I'm going to change the LNP's mind here on the floor of council, but I did want to open up the conversation and prompt further reflection from anyone who's listening online, because we're going to be stuck with this problem for a while yet. Over the next couple of years, I don't know, presumably at some point Labour and the Greens end up in power here in this chamber. And honestly, right now, I'm not entirely sure how we are going to be able to find the money to do all the stuff that the LNP has failed to do over the past decade or so. There are so many pedestrian crossings, so many essential bikeway upgrades, new parks that we need, new stormwater infrastructure and drainage infrastructure. The list of stuff that our communities need to cater, not just for the growth that's yet to come, but for the population growth we've already experienced in recent years, it's a phenomenally long list. What we're voting on here today is only a small proportion of that. And so when I look at these huge costs of, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars really, in the stuff that the council does want to do, and then there's probably billions of dollars' worth more of infrastructure that I think needs to happen for the city, it is going to be really, really difficult to pay for that. One way to help bring down some of those costs is to collapse property values, because if property values fall dramatically, then the cost of acquiring land for community facilities or parks, et cetera, would diminish a little bit, and that's probably one piece of the puzzle. And another element is certainly increasing those infrastructure charges. But even if we do that, this backlog that the LNP is leaving the city with is so dramatic that it's going to take years and years to catch up on. And I don't, yeah, I don't entirely know how we're going to resolve that. I can foresee that we're being left with a problem of the LNP's creation, and I feel frustrated about that, and disappointed that we haven't been spending more now to deal with those future challenges. But at the very least, I think we really need to reconsider some of these road widening projects. Like, I'm just looking at the road widens through Morningside alone along Litton Road, and they're astronomical costs for that corridor. And like I said, once you factor in the land acquisition costs on top of everything else, you realise that these estimates are still very low. So there's a fundamental underlying structural problem here, and, you know, quibbling about which projects are in or out of this list is sort of just window dressing, because the deeper underlying issue remains, which is just that we don't have anywhere near enough revenue coming in to deliver the projects we need to deliver, and we are spending way too much of that revenue that is coming in on road widening projects that represent poor value for money. So I guess, yeah, I'm preparing myself emotionally, and perhaps trying to prepare other councillors for the fact that even if we do get a change of administration at some point in the future, we're not going to be able to deliver all this stuff that we want straight away. The list and the backlog is so long, and the deficit is so chronic. Yeah, you're right, councillor Strunk, the debt is pretty high. Personally, I'm an advocate of debt-funded infrastructure. I think it's better to take out the loan when our credit rating's good and invest in the infrastructure early on, because the longer you delay, the higher the cost becomes, and often failing to deliver some of that essential infrastructure causes more wear and tear on other pieces of infrastructure. So I don't know, I would argue that there probably is a case for taking on more debt to deliver some of this stuff faster, and I think we have to be open to that conversation as well. But we're also going to have to look at other revenue streams, because we're falling so far behind here, and I think future administrations and future generations of city councils will shake their fists at us for allowing things to get this bad. As councillor Allen said, like we acknowledged, there's a lot of investment in the Gabba Ward, and even the Gabba Ward, which seems to be getting more expenditure in this document than a lot of parts of the city, even that isn't coming close to what the electorate needs to cater for the extra 30,000 people that have already moved in over the past decade. So there's a big problem here, and I'm very unsatisfied with the way that the current administration is handling it.
Thank you. Further debate, councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to speak on both B and C. Briefly on C, the LTIP. At the last time, we were presented with some documents for the plan and on the LTIP. I did mention, and I appreciate that obviously council officers were listening, I did appreciate that there was an item which was in Anala, which I couldn't really work out where that was supposed to be. It didn't really tell us. Then when we did find out, it didn't make any sense, and it was a district-integrated facility. So that's been actually taken out. I think it was probably in there. It has been taken out and has not moved on to the L-Gip at all. So, yeah, they obviously listened, and I appreciate that. We do take a lot of time and trouble, my team and myself, going through when we have updates, especially with these maps, which are, and I've said it before, they're quite challenging, some of these maps that come through in the documents, because they're really very hard to read in some cases, but we do our best and we eventually work it out. And so in regards to the L-Gip, there was two items that have popped up that, again, I want to mention, and maybe again the council officers will take notes. One was a future community facility that they've put on the map right in the middle of an intersection of Corsair and Anala Avenue. And I thought, well, maybe that's just a slight mistake, you know, where they plop the dot, but if you look right around the actual intersection, and probably a few hundred metres from that intersection, again, it doesn't make any sense that it's there. So if they could possibly have a look at that one, and also there was another one in the middle of a roundabout at Rockfield Street and Crossacre Street at Duen Dala, would appreciate maybe they have a look at that one, because, I mean, both are facilities, community facilities that they're highlighting in the L-Gip. And so, you know, those sort of facilities are always needed, of course, in any community, especially in emerging community, for instance, like Duen Dala, which is seeing a lot of growth, and where, actually, the Woolworths is finally going to build that grocery store there on the corner of Blunder and Crossacre Street. We heard recently they're actually going to go ahead, which everyone's really looking forward to that. So I just wanted to mention those two. But if we have a look at the, and it's covered in the L-Gip, if we have a look at the suburb of Ellen Grove, and I'm just talking the acreage now, because it's a split suburb with Jamboree Ward, which is the old Carroll Park, which was renamed Ellen Grove some years back. But if we have a look at the acreage, which is in my ward of Forest Lake, we have a look at what was proposed or has been proposed over the last number of years, and some of this keeps getting pushed out. But really, there's been no developments, there's been no recent purchases of any properties for parks and recreational space within the boundaries of the acreage. Some years ago, there was some land was purchased, of course, on the corner of Woolgaroo and Waterford Road, which remains undeveloped as anything other than a stand of trees, which are very nice. But, and there is some capacity to do some playground areas within those, in between those trees, because it's not like it's a planted forest as such. But the other thing too is that there's another block of land as well, which, again, sits right behind the school car park in Waterford Road that goes right through to the Uniting Church, which was purchased again some years ago, and that, the development of that recreational space, again, has not happened. Now, if we have a look at the actual area, it's probably about four square kilometres of land I'm talking about now, which has not really seen any investment by this council over the last probably 10, 15 years, at least, maybe 20 years. There's been a little bit of high-density development, townhouses and things like that at the western end, but there has been no infrastructure, infrastructures for this area from council. Now, probably the biggest issue, of course, is the sewage, which, again, is Q-U-U, and water. Certainly has water, but it doesn't have any sewage in this area, and the connector to the closest treatment plant has not happened. And so the site itself, or this four square kilometres, is basically undeveloped. There's a few, there's a number of houses, of course, that are on very large acreages, and there's very few people that actually live in this big area. I think the last time I checked on how many people actually voted in that acreage area, I think it was about 137, so as you can imagine, that's not a lot of homes. And it's only about 20 kilometres from the CBD, it's right on a train line, and I don't know why the council has just not looked at this area and say, listen, we need to invest, we need to work with Q-U-U to develop this area, because it's an area that's right for development, good development, good housing development. It's got all the services around it, it's got access to the Logan Motorway, it's got everything going for it, but this council in the LTIP and the L-Chip just aren't doing the job. They put things down here, but it just keeps getting pushed out further and further, and I just am amazed, something so close to the CBD of Brisbane, on the Ipswich Motorway with the Logan Motorway just there, on a train line, and we haven't done anything. We really have not done anything. So we really let the people of Brisbane, I mean, honestly, I reckon you could probably, in that sort of four square kilometres, you could probably build probably 1,000 properties. It's that- It's that big. You should really, if you haven't ever seen it, or driven through it, just come out and have a look. And, you know, the planning chair maybe should come out and have a look at that, because it's something that really needs to be looked at seriously, and needs to have that investment. And we need to work with QUU to get those underground services lined up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers. We move to the vote on items B and C. All in favour of items B and C, please say aye.
Aye.
In your post, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by the deputy mayor and councillor Hutton. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Thanks, Billy Closevaz. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and six abstentions.
Declare items B and C carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors. Lord Mayor, items G, H, I and K for debate then voting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item G is an amendment to significant contracting plans and a sole source submission. As I flagged in the chamber last week, the global inflation crisis, the real challenges that all levels of governments are facing with construction prices, the supply of materials, supply of labour, labour shortages, construction companies falling over, and any number of real challenges that are out there have impacted on council's record infrastructure spend, and are obviously putting upward pressure on price. Now, you know, we hear the same tired labour rhetoric of, you know, claims that somehow project pressures at a state level are just a fact of life, and we should all accept that because of global inflation. But project changes at a council level, oh, that's a whole different thing. Cannot be justified. And this is the kind of rubbish that we expect to hear, and we know the lack of imagination that these Labour councillors have will come to the fore today. They'll be somehow trying to argue that the project pressures that we're experiencing are different to the project pressures Labour governments are experiencing. But, yeah, that's right, exactly, exactly right. So you'll see this play out, but the reality is, because we have budgeted responsibly, because we deliver surplus budgets every year, we have always done that, and we've continued to do that, even in the most difficult of circumstances, we can absorb these costs going forward by a reduction in the projected surplus. A reduction in the surplus this year, and a reduction in the surplus over the coming two years to help absorb these costs. But, most importantly, so that we can continue building the infrastructure that needs to be built. Now, we also hear that Labour councillors say that this is supposedly for some inner-city projects, as though there's no benefit to anyone else except for the people that live in the city. We know that is also completely false. We know projects like Brisbane Metro, not only in its first stage, but in future stages, will transform the entire transport network in Brisbane. Oh, again, they oppose Brisbane Metro. They oppose Brisbane Metro. And it's funny, because I remind you again, councillor Cassidy, the state government is 100% on board Brisbane Metro, the federal government is 100% on board Brisbane Metro, and the only people waiting at the station with no friends are the Labour opposition. They are sitting there sucking on a sour lollipop, and the transport system has passed them by, because they have refused to get on board this transformative project. And so the premier called it essential transport infrastructure. The premier! So, look, we'll hear the same lines rolled out. They are discredited lines, they are lines which, look, I would simply say, the same kind of lines which put them in the same camp as the Victorian opposition, which got pummeled at the election on the weekend, because Dan Andrews builds stuff, and he wants to build even more stuff. And who whines and carps about it? The opposition. That's where you're headed. That's where the Labour Party's headed, into political oblivion. They are going to get rolled by the Greens, because at least, at least the Greens stand for something. They stand for a whole lot of crazy stuff, but they stand for it! Labour Party stands for nothing, and they are gone. They are gone. They have made themselves politically irrelevant, because they don't stand for anything. And we're going to hear that today. They're going to be against building infrastructure, they're going to be against everything, they're going to offer no alternative solutions, and they are just going to roll out the same speech that they roll out week in, week out on these projects. But we're not going to be deterred by this negativity, just like we never have been. We're going to keep building the infrastructure our city needs. We're going to keep rolling out Brisbane Metro, we're going to keep building new green bridges, we're going to keep rolling out the Mogal Road corridor upgrade. And even though the Greens oppose that upgrade, we're going to build it, because we believe that these projects in the suburbs are important. And we believe making it easier for people to catch public transport and to use active travel modes, such as our new green bridges will do, is really important. And so, yes, we're facing pressures, but this is about getting on with the job, absorbing the impact in the surplus, and continuing to build the things that need to be built. Item H is the amendment for the Significant Contracting Plan for the Provision of Traffic Control Management Services. Council obviously regularly requires traffic management services as we build infrastructure or maintain infrastructure across the road network. Traffic management control now provides, or makes up a significant cost of pretty much everything we do that has any impact when it comes to roads or transport. A significant portion of the budget for any project is traffic management, and it's all about ensuring the safety of our workers, it's about making sure that the public operates safely through these areas. So this is an essential service. But having said that, due to changes in the market and increased competitiveness for projects and major infrastructure builds at all level of government, we're requiring to be more agile in the way that we meet the demands. And as has been the case in this and other submissions, we're beholden to the turbulent nature of the market with the current environment that we're in. We're increasing, we're witnessing increased demands, ongoing change in market conditions, and a decreased availability from our primary supplier. Allowing for alternative suppliers would allow relief for council's current supplier, and enable us to supplement that with different suppliers. So that's the point here. Item I is the Stores Board Submission Contracting Plan for the Amendment to the Curbside Large Items Collection and Recycling Service. Obviously, we were able to bring back the curbside collection one year earlier than anticipated, thanks to responsible financial management. Once again, something, and, look, you know, Labour made such a big thing about the cancellation of a one-off collection that happens once a year, yet they want to reduce the weekly waste collection services. I mean, what hypocrites are they? What hypocrites do we have here, when they go off like a pork chop, sizzle like a pork chop, against a one-off, once-a-year service, yet they want to reduce waste collection services for everyone in the city by 50%? 50% cut to services. So we will, we will continue to invest in the services that people appreciate. And what we've seen here is obviously a combination of a couple of factors. Obviously, there's been some pent-up demand for curbside collection in the year that it was paused. You would expect that. People, unfortunately, we're all accumulating things these years that we do need to get rid of in the future or recycle. The process with our curbside collection programme is that we pay by volume. And so if there's more volume, then the costs go up. And so we've seen some higher volumes in recent times, and if that higher volume continues into the future, we will need to allocate more funding for this programme. And that is the reality. Having said that, if the volumes peter off, and they are lower over time, or if they go back to more traditional level, then obviously the costs will come down accordingly. But having said that, we do need to provide for the higher volumes, and so that's exactly what we're doing here. We've been out to make sure that this service can continue to be provided by the community. We know it is appreciated. And we also know that it is an important part of the circular economy in our community. And so while items that are put out on the curbside, if it's still there when our collection team comes around, that material is collected. Anywhere from 40, depending on who you ask, to 60% of the material disappears into the community as part of the circular economy. And what are they called, councillor Marks? The urban recyclers get on to it. They've been known by other names in the past, but urban recyclers take that material and repurpose it for other uses. Some of it, some of it is used directly as is.
Your time has expired.
Move for extension.
Seconded. Extension of time for the Lord Mayor has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
In your post, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Yeah, some of it is reused directly, some of it is, I guess, dismantled and created into other things. But ultimately, it's part of this circular economy that is well and healthy in the city and continuing to grow. But having said that, this includes, this SCP includes the provision for 4,000 extra tonnes of material that residents are putting out on the curb each year in recent times. And as I said, if it continues on at that level, more money will need to be allocated. But if it comes down, obviously, the budget will come down. Is that, is item K the next one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So item K is the amendment of a Significant Contracting Plan for the Provision of Field Communications. This is an amendment to a previously approved SCP. Council's infield services are central to the operations of our city. Brisbane Infrastructure Division and most of Transport for Brisbane are based out in the field, and they rely heavily on the field communications equipment. These infield services rely on the presence of a 100% available two-way radio network to ensure safe and efficient services are delivered to Brisbane residents. The SCP was approved by council four years ago, in November 2018. Contractual term of 13 years was approved in the SCP, made up of an 18-month transition period, a 10-year contract term, and an 18-month transition out period. During contract negotiations, it was determined that the best outcome for council would be to instead enter into a contract made of an 18-month transition period, an initial contract term of seven years, with an optional extension period of up to six years, and a transition out period of up to 18 months. And so this represents a total contract period of 16 years, three years longer than the original approved SCP. Since the originally approved SCP and its annual expenditure was estimated, several factors have changed, which require an amendment to what's been put forward together. These include items which were unable to be costed until detailed design was developed, increased functionality in the equipment, which we want to take advantage of, the three-year extension of the contract term over and above what was originally proposed, allowing for additional future price escalation, and once again, price escalation sadly is a factor of life at the moment, and changes to council services, such as the need for bush radios and possible volumetric increases in our services in terms of staff requiring field communications. Collectively, these factors have led to an increase in the estimated potential cost over the extended 16-year term of the contract. Obviously, it goes without saying, but I will say it, it is vital that our staff are safe out in the field and have the equipment necessary to do their job effectively. And that's also part of our zero harm commitment. So I commend these items to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. At the outset, can I just ask that item G be taken seriously and for voting, please?
G, seriously and for voting.
Yes, thanks very much. Yeah, I think there's an outstanding book, the Brisbane Square Library's chasing down a borrow, has had it for a while. I think the Lord Mayor's had the secret out for a while. And he's just, he says these things, he makes them up, but then he keeps saying them, and he keeps thinking them, sort of the power of positive intentions for him, and he thinks they'll manifest these things if he keeps saying them, and they'll come true. But at the end of the day, they absolutely won't. And I hope he's keeping as he goes, I hope he's doing a tally out the back of what we owe, because we're clearly all living rent-free in his head. And we're all joining in on that these days, listening to his performances in E and C these days, they're really quite amusing. They shouldn't be coming from a Lord Mayor of Brisbane, facing significant challenges, but he obviously thinks this job is a big joke and a big game for him to play. But he is, this Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrinna, is mortgaging Brisbane's future on his pet projects in the inner city of Brisbane. He's locking residents into generational debt and generational rates increases. But what do the suburbs of Brisbane have to show for it? What they will have is record rates increases, and they will become the norm under the LMP because of the political decisions that this LMP mayor, Adrian Shrinna, has made. The residents of Brisbane will have now generational debt, which will mean that really tough decisions are going to have to be made by future administrations, because the basics will be struggled to be delivered by a future council, given the high levels of debt that this LMP administration is getting us into. And it's all because of a couple of pet projects by this Lord Mayor. And there is no accident, and there is no external forces out there in the world which are to, are the blame for the cuts to suburban services outside of the political decisions that this Lord Mayor is making. It was by design, the cuts to suburban services and the increase in rates was by design, the moment that this LMP administration announced their overcooked metro, so-called metro service, and the Lord Mayor's inner-city bridges. And now Adrian Shrinna is asking council to sign a $400 million cheque to cover the latest cost blowouts. Not the first cost blowouts, but the latest cost blowouts on his signature projects. So of course, we remember the metro project when it was announced in January 2016, six years ago. It was going to, well, actually, then it was a, then it was a underground, so it wasn't going to be 944 million then, it was going to be 1.2. They scaled it back then, re-scaled it. But we remember what we were promised by this LMP administration back then, an underground subway system to rival Paris or London. They said those vehicles would run on tracks, they would be an underground train, essentially. They promised us a subway. You fast-forward now six years, and this project has faded away to 200... You fast-forward now six years, and this project has faded away to a 200-metre tunnel under Adelaide Street which is collapsing. It's doubled in cost, and 60 overseas-made buses that won't arrive in Brisbane until 2034 at the earliest, all of them, that's right. So, there's a 10-year horizon on the purchase of these Swiss-made buses, and the cost of those have also blown out significantly, significantly. So, when this so-called metro system that the LMP talk about opens, they originally pushed back the soft opening, they called it, to 2025, I think now. There might be six of these Swiss-made buses on the busway, and then the next year there might be 12, and then there might be 18. We don't know, because that timeframe could blow out as well on this LMP administration's watch. So, so much for the turn-up-and-go services that we were promised. We were promised a subway system, an underground subway system. And then, when they sort of redesigned it to be a busway, which was, hang on, what we've already got, but with some different vehicles, they said it would be turn-up-and-go every three minutes with six buses across the entire south-east busway and the inner-northern busway. And then the Lord Mayor says he'll send it out to Carrendale, to the airport, and all the way to Chermside with six buses. They must really think the people of Brisbane are stupid, but they're not. The people of Brisbane are not stupid. This is the single most over-promised and under-delivered project this city has ever seen. Now, the Lord Mayor needs to answer a simple question. He can't simply say in here that, oh, well, there's a surplus that is being eaten up entirely in this year's budget, and therefore that will pay for the $400 million in extra debt he's taking on to fund the cost blowouts on his signature projects. Rates will have to go up more than they should, or services will be cut. He won't come clean with the people of Brisbane which of those two options he's going to take, because it has to be paid for.
Deputy Mayor, please.
It's going to have to be one of two options. So, he should come clean. He should come clean and tell us which projects he's slashing. He wouldn't today come clean on which projects are being cut from the infrastructure project, from the infrastructure budget and the Lifestyle and Community Services budget this year. But we know next year, rates are going to be at an astronomically high level, and services in the suburbs of Brisbane are going to miss out once again. So, you know, you really have to ask, you know, it's not really asking the question anymore. I mean, people know it in their minds. They don't even have to ask whether they think they're getting good value for money from this LMP administration. They absolutely know they're not. They know they're not. They know when simple drainage projects can't be completed, or footpath extensions, or a footpath in a street that's been crying out for one for the last 100 years. When council's response consistently is, this will have to be listed for funding in a future budget, and priorities will dictate where this funding goes, well, everyone knows where this funding's going now. It's to plug the black hole in the Brisbane Metro project and to plug the black hole in the inner-city bridges project. And this is generational. The Greens councillor remarked a couple of weeks ago that, well, you know, rates have doubled under this LMP administration, but lots of things have doubled, he said. Lots of things have doubled as well. Well, again, the wages of council's lowest-paid workers haven't doubled in the last 20 years. Drainage funding hasn't doubled, roads, suburban road projects haven't doubled, and footpaths around Brisbane haven't doubled, not when you're building 18 a year across 190 suburbs. But people really aren't getting good value for money. Something that, well, it's not doubling, it's tripling, as we see in the Enters the Quans today, Chair, is the advertising budget. It went from $400,000 on the Brisbane campaign to 1.2 million this year. And on their track record, we can, you could run a book on how much it's going to be next financial year, Chair, in the lead-up to the next election. It was, I think, $4.5 million last time, in the lead-up to the last election. We know the advertising budget in the Walter Taylor Ward was running at $30,000 last year, which was almost 50% of the budget in that ward office, Chair. So, we know, we do see increases in this budget, and we do see increases under this LMP administration on inner-city projects, increases in blowouts, increases in rates, increases in the advertising budget. But we don't see increases in suburban infrastructure. The only way, of course, to change all this is to change the Lord Mayor. And from what I've read, there are certainly people interested in doing that as well as we get closer to the election. And given the LMP's behaviour today, yeah, it won't be very hard to do that. Clause H is the amendment to the contracting plan for traffic control management. We desperately need a root-and-branch review in this council chair of the LMP's contracting-out sprees. I have it on good authority from within the organisation that we're seeing, the costs increases we're seeing on contracted-out services are dwarfing those increases we're seeing on in-house services. It is, it makes financial and economic sense for the people of Brisbane to have basic services conducted by council for the residents of Brisbane rather than contracting those services out. The LMP's been in power for almost 20 years, and over that time, they have been hollowing out council's own ability to manage both large projects but also provide basic services like traffic control and road closures. Now, those of us who were on the ground, actually on the ground in the February 2022 flood disaster, saw the direct result of that contracting-out. There were no council crews that could perform road closures, and even if there were any council staff on hand, there was no equipment to do so. In some cases in my ward, it was three days of constant calling, not by me to council, but by council officers, to external contractors to try and get some signs, some witches' hats, some bollards to close roads that were dangerous and they were flooded and were impacting on people's property as well as people's safety. If people are continuing to pay the highest rates on record, they deserve better than they're getting from this LMP.
Thank you. Can I move for an extension?
Second. Extension of time for the Leader of the Opposition has been moved by councillor Cook. And Strunk, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. So, these are really basic services. They're ongoing, they're day-to-day. As the Lord Mayor even said, these are for ongoing projects, whether they're small, medium or large in this council. It makes economic sense to do these things in-house, provide job security, but also good value for the ratepayers of Brisbane. Clause I is another contracting plan amendment, this one for curbside collection. Jeez, the Lord Mayor's got some gall coming in here and taking credit for the reintroduction of curbside collection after he cancelled it unceremoniously. Yeah, he's a legend in his own lunchbox, that guy. We think that the procedures around contracting out should be root-and-branches, I said, and should include services like this as well. When you're seeing these really significant increases in these contracts, you've got to ask yourself, are these really good value for money anymore? The Lord Mayor likes to play down curbside collection and says that, well, it's just a once-a-year, once-a-year, he says, that's all that happens, as if it might happen on one day a year, maybe one week a year or one month a year maybe. He just says, once a year. It happens every week of the year around Brisbane. Curbside collection is happening. It's a basic service, it's waste management. And I think the Lord Mayor and this LMP administration realised they really kicked a hornet's nest when they cancelled it, because he made out as if we were the only ones that raised these issues. But don't worry, I saw that research, I saw the research, and I saw how the people of Brisbane responded to those cuts to basic services. And I think if they knew that these basic services were being contracted out, and as a result of that political decision that this LMP administration has made, they're seeing millions of dollars extra added to all these contracts, millions and millions and millions of dollars extra. And if they knew it would be much cheaper to do it in-house, where council could control those costs, I think they would think that would be much better value for money than they are getting from this LMP administration. So, they're paying, residents are paying record-high rates, and as we look at every single item before us today, we can see why. This is building a very powerful story of the last 20 years of this LMP administration. They're lazy, they're incompetent, they're politically motivated, they make decisions based on their ideology rather than the best interests of the ratepayers of Brisbane. Talk about some similarities between parties. We see the kinds of people that populate this LMP administration, the exact same kinds of people we saw running in the Victorian state election for the Liberal Party. And we saw what happened to them. A progressive state booted them right out, and a progressive city like Brisbane is going to boot them right out as well in 2024. Now, the final item, clause K, you know, talk about poor project management. When we saw those contracts for, come through recently in contract and tendering, there were contracts to contract out the contract management of contracting out. When we saw them, you, this is a problem for a long time, but you saw those ones coming through, and you knew it was catastrophic in terms of contract management in this administration. Here's a perfect example before us today, clause K, the provision of field communications. The original budget didn't anticipate, so the original amount that was allocated for this contract didn't anticipate a contract of 13 years for these radios, which also begs the question, how can you predict the rate of CPI for 13 years? That's one of the reasons that's been given in the item before us today, to increase this item before us by so many millions of dollars. So, you have to seriously wonder about the probability of such a long contract when it's increasing in cost by so much now, let alone what'll happen in 13 years' time. What's before us today in the item, in, you know, the explanations that's given, is a whole lot of sort of MBA management talk, which covers up the failure in project management before us today. But the fact is that the administration is no longer able to manage basic contracts. You know, they contracted out basic services, they're contracting out absolutely everything. And I suppose they were able to paper over the cracks for so long, but not anymore. When you have a situation where external contracts are increasing by 25%, but internally they're able, our workforce is able to manage those at, you know, 15 or 20% lower increases, you've got to ask yourself the question, why does this LMP administration continue to contract out basic work? It's driving up debt, it's driving up rates, and it's leading to less services in our suburbs. People really are paying more and getting less under the LMP.
Any further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item I, the significant contract plan amendment for the curbside Large Items Collection and Recycling Service. As we all know, the service allows residents to place bulky items on the curbside and have them collected for free. I just want to clarify the record. Yes, it does happen across 41 weeks of the year, servicing the suburbs on a regular basis, but the households have it happen for them individually once per year. That's what the Lord Mayor was saying. So, if you live in a property, you will get access to a large curbside collection once per year, as opposed to the red bin collection, which happens on a weekly basis. Just want to make that clear in case anyone is under any misunderstanding about how rubbish bin collection and curbside collection works. Well, we know that residents do value this scheduled service, and it gives them time to plan their clean-ups around the collection date. And as we all know, those dates are published on the website a year in advance. There are a number of different pressures facing the Australian economy, but with more people utilising the service and the rising cost of just about everything at the moment, the item for us today seeks to amend the estimated maximum expenditure within the SCP. As the Lord Mayor also mentioned, this is what we would call potentially the worst-case scenario. So, this is working on extremely high figures of people putting out extreme large amounts of goods to be collected. Obviously, the more goods they put out, the more trips the trucks have to make, the longer it takes, the more expensive it is. So, all we can do is ask residents to please consider to continue to recycle as much as they can. All four of our Resource Recovery Centres have the free recycling section. If for some reason you don't feel that you can go through that section, you want to go straight through to the tipping part of the Resource Recovery Centre, there are offices on hand, and they have little, what they call dollies, it's a little trolley on wheels, they can assist you to move potentially your large white goods items into a secondary recycling section. All of that helps for us and the contractors to get less stuff and more recycling. I actually participated as an urban recycler myself once. I managed to pick up a baby cot, which we then took home and stripped, we stripped it down, re-varnished it, put it all back together, and my children lived, they probably, they didn't quite live in it, they potentially, they slept, they slept in that baby cot for a number of years, and then I was able to pass it on to someone else. So, I would suggest urban recycling is fine. All we ask is residents be polite and be mindful of when you're going through other people's stuff, just to not leave a big mess on the side of the footpath and be respectful. That's what we ask for. But recycling is good, so the more we do it, the better off we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on items G, H, I, and K. If you listen to the LMP, what you would be hearing is that the circumstances of the half of a billion dollars in cost blowout that are attached to these seven projects is completely out of their control. It was the war in Ukraine, it was Putin, yeah, it was Putin's fault. You know, the global pandemic that's, you know, been on, it's that fault. I'm surprised I didn't blame George Street or even Canberra to say it's Labour's fault. That's the only thing I didn't hear with the list and litany of excuses that has come out of the mouths of the LMP Finance Chair, Lord Mayor, and others here today. What we are seeing is the outcome of a bad contracting process. Now, this is what has been going on for the last few years. The LMP brings some sort of plan up here with some very vague statements about what they want to do, or it's a sole sourcing contract, oh, we couldn't possibly go and ask the market, no, it's too hard to ask the market, or, oh, no, well, we're just going to piggyback on the back of something else. The LMP has been running council major projects like this for many, many years, and they are increasingly turning bad. Yes, external forces are buffeting some of these processes. But the problem is the way in which these contracts have been established by the LMP and their leadership of the major projects that form a signature part of their administration is fundamentally the problem. So, let's take the metro as one example. It was a poorly conceived process. It was a bad concept that got worse. It's been scrapped multiple times. First, it was going to be a bat tunnel, and then it was going to be another tunnel under the river, and, you know, then it was going to be a subway system with rail, and then it's buses, and who knows what it will actually be next week? Who knows? It was poorly conceived as an election stunt by the Lord Mayor. And then, over the last term of council, the LMP has managed to run the contracting process, the design, the tendering, all of that's been run into the ground. I mean, this Lord Mayor went out and spent millions and millions of dollars of ratepayers' money doing work before they had approval to do that work on state government land. They employed the private sector and paid them millions of dollars, millions of dollars. And they had to junk it all because they did not have approval to deliver the project. We're still seeing that happen now. You know, it's still pretty unclear about whether there's going to be new bus stations at the Gabber, is that where the Gabber's going to be upgraded? Is that Olympics-related? The project now, and it's not clear in here, because it's all been kept secret, it's probably up to about $1.8 billion, easily. It has more than doubled. So, when your project, your signature project goes that bad, you should not keep throwing good money after bad money. This administration has epically botched the metro, epically botched the metro. They failed to design it properly, they failed to conceive it properly, they failed to undertake a rigorous and transparent contracting plan. And now, when things are getting a little bit hard, they're like, aha, we'll just throw money at it. We'll just whip out the ATM, the Brisbane ratepayer, and we'll just go cha-ching out of their back pocket to pay for the botched projects. Now, that's one of only seven major projects that this administration has stuffed up and is now just going to rip money out of the budget, the little bit of buffer we have for when emergencies happen. for when emergencies happen, the little bit of buffer there is, little bit, which is not much, the little bit of buffer for anything unusual that happens. They're cancelling projects left, right and centre by cutting other projects in infrastructure. Remember, this budget is one of the worst for rollovers and incompleted projects from last year to start with. So when the Lord Mayor says there's a record infrastructure spend, no, there's not, it's because that probably about a quarter of all projects from last year weren't done, and they had to be rolled over to be delivered this year. And you watch, exactly the same thing is going to happen again next year. This administration cannot be trusted to deliver on major projects. Let's look at their other signature project, the Green Bridges. The ratepayers of Brisbane are just going to keep on paying and paying and paying. Both Green Bridges and the Lawes-Bonney Riverwalk are going to end up costing way, way more than they did previously. And can I tell you what that will be? No, I can't, because the LMP are keeping it secret. They don't want the ratepayers of Brisbane to know the huge stuff-up. This is nearly half a billion dollars. I can't get Oxley Road resurfaced. I can't get a pedestrian refuge near a school. We can't get a playground upgrade in Oxley. We can't get stormwater upgraded in Yorongah. But meanwhile, the LMP are whipping out the ratepayers' credit card to the tune of half a billion dollars and saying, there's nothing to see here, it's not our fault, it's Putin's fault. When they rip this kind of money out of the budget, it has a massive impact, a massive impact on the delivery of local services in our community. They are propping themselves up, and it is, it is, what's the word I'm looking for? It's, it, it's, it's, no, no.
It's good financial language.
No, that's not the word. It's like bloated, it's like bloated. I missed that, Jared, don't you? Were you having to go at me or them? Good, excellent. It's bloated, it's a bloated administration who can't recognise that things are spiralling down. They can't see how badly this has been going for them. We are seeing the Mogawood Upgrade Project, which, commercial incompetence, commercial incompetence, commercial incompetence. I can understand why they don't want anyone to know how badly that's going.
How much longer?
Yeah, how much longer it's going to go. I mean, it's definitely going to be into the election, and all those residents, all those residents who have to deal with the chaos that the LMP have unleashed on them over there. And remember, what's there now is what the LMP actually wanted to do, traffic lights. I mean, they have absolutely stuffed this one up. No, there's not. When you spend half a bid, so the deputy mayor's just saying, is there anything good? No, there's not. When you overspend-
Point of order. Point of order to you, deputy mayor.
Could you please clarify? That is not what I said. She's going to interpret what I say, at least repeat it properly.
Councillor, deputy mayor, you were interjecting across the floor, and it may have been misinterpreted. You have the opportunity to respond in general business if you wish.
Yep. So, I mean, when this administration overspends by a lazy half a billion dollars, that is not good. There is nothing positive I can say about that. You are delivering projects that you have botched from the very beginning. You are delivering projects that this city can't afford. You are not delivering that money into projects that are needed in the suburbs, needed for flood recovery, needed for local amenity and safety, needed to support residents in the suburbs. It is appalling. And not only, it gets better. I mean, this Brisbane International Cycle Park at Murray, which was, I think it's supposed to be some sort of Olympic training facility, it's the first Olympic project that Brisbane's actually attempting to deliver, and they've botched it, the first one. I mean, we're not in charge of actually delivering infrastructure for the Olympics, and here's the Lord Mayor gone out, no, me too, me too, I want to be out there, Olympics, Olympics. And he goes, yeah, we'll do the cycling, we'll do the cycling project. Guess what? Botched, rushed, mismanaged, botched, overspent. This is a profligate LMP that's become bloated, tired and out of touch, and they have to go. There is no better reason than half a billion dollars worth of overspending waste.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? No further speakers? Oh, yes, councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item G, the amendment to the significant contracting plans, particularly as they relate to items within Programme One. Now, as noted by the Lord Mayor, the item before us today is to allow an amendment to the previously approved significant contracting plans for several of council's major projects. Chair, we know that Brisbane's population will continue to boom in the next decade, and that means we have to invest in projects and in infrastructure that can cater for future capacity. We're also, as you know, the host of the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, which will be the first carbon positive games, so we're working very hard to prepare our city with projects that encourage sustainable travel. This is evident in our record investment in public and active transport projects, which include the Brisbane Metro and the Green Bridges Programme, to ensure that we can easily commute to and from work, we can access education, we can explore lifestyle and leisure activities, and we can visit the people and places that we love. However, as the Lord Mayor has flagged and flagged last week, we now know that we are building these projects in extremely difficult times. In fact, you could say, Chair, these are the worst of times for building projects. Since commencing work, we have been faced with the effects of local disasters like February's flood, as well as global crises such as the COVID-19 pandemic, the worldwide inflation crisis and Russia's invasion of Ukraine. All of these events have contributed to unprecedented cost escalations in the market. The cost of some steel products has increased by 20%, as has asphalt and concrete by more than 12%. Inflationary pressures have caused fuel, timber, sand and labour to skyrocket in price as well. Now, despite these price rises, there are global shortages of construction materials, leading to lengthy and costly wait times where projects sit idle and are unable to proceed. At the same time, demand for labour and subcontractors is extremely high, making tendering processes costly and non-competitive due to low market capacity. In fact, Chair, we had a briefing just a few months ago from the Independent Body Infrastructure Australia, which advises all Australian governments about how to proceed with major infrastructure projects. And do you know what they told us? They said, you need to stop building stuff now. You need to stop building stuff now because the market is so overheated that infrastructure projects are simply not value for money. And in fact, the New South Wales Government has done just that, they have scaled back a number of capital infrastructure projects significantly. But as I mentioned, with the population growth pressures, with the Olympics coming, that is not something that this Lord Mayor is prepared to do, that is not something that this administration is prepared to do. So I want to just speak briefly on two particular projects that are impacted and that are featured in this, in this submission. Firstly, the award-winning Brisbane Metro, the metro that just keeps getting better, Chair. This project, we know, will provide our city's transport network with additional capacity, and it will revolutionise the people, the way people get around Brisbane. Metro is a project that Brisbane not only wants, but a project that Brisbane needs. It is co-funded by the state and federal governments, which proves just how important it is to our future of the city. And I note that Cross River Rail is not funded by local government, is not funded by the federal government, because it didn't provide a benefit cost ratio that was supported by Infrastructure Australia, whereas Brisbane Metro did. Brisbane Metro is the biggest public transport project that this council has ever undertaken, and major infrastructure is now being delivered at 10 sites across the city. Construction's been underway since 2021 and will continue until 2024 when services commence. Now, like many projects these days, Mr Chair, the collaborative partnership agreement that we have for construction between council and our various delivery partners was formed on what's called a pain share, gain share basis. Unfortunately, at the moment, there is no gain to share, there is only pain. Our contractors have absorbed many price increases, but it is responsible and fair for council to also contribute to covering additional costs. The scale of this project is massive, and it means that the cost increases to materials like steel, concrete and asphalt have all contributed to additional unexpected costs to the project. In fact, construction of Brisbane Metro's depot administration building alone has used more than 300 cubic metres of concrete and 500 tonnes of steel. While a project of this size, of course, contains contingencies to cover unforeseen circumstances, the magnitude of the challenges that I mentioned earlier, Chair, could not have been predicted. Sub-subcontractors, some subcontractors have withdrawn their bids on parts of the project due to the inability to source suppliers and/or workers. Disruptions in the global supply chain have also put pressure on the availability of suppliers in the build of our metro vehicles, which are being manufactured by Hess. Of course, we already have our first metro pilot vehicle here in Brisbane, with the remaining 59 vehicles to come. Now, Chair, we've heard a lot from councillor Cassidy today, but one of his more interesting and outlandish claims was that we wouldn't have the 60 metros in time for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. And Chair, there's, there's really nothing else to say than that is a complete and total fabrication. It is, it is a lie. Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy needs to learn how to read the documentation that is in front of him. As per the E and C papers before us, our contract with Hess will last for 10 years. And councillors, any guess why we would have a contract that would last for 10 years for supply and maintenance of our 60 metros? Any reckon why we would have a contract that would last for 10 years? Oh, councillor Wines gets a Fred O'Frogg because he's just said, he said the answer, and I'll read it into the record, to maintain them. When you buy a vehicle, generally you need parts and maintenance for it, and so that is why the contract will last until 2032. It doesn't mean that it will take until 2032 to deliver the vehicles. So either councillor Cassidy has extremely basic comprehension skills when it comes to reading the documents in front of him, and is not able to perform his job as the opposition leader, or he's just lying to people, saying that we won't be able to deliver these buses in time for 2032 Games, which is rubbish, of course, because construction of the vehicles is well underway, and we'll be ready to commence full-rate Brisbane Metro services in 2024. Now, Chair, to the Green Bridges Programme, which is all about getting more cars off the road and providing more choice when it comes to travel. We are well into construction when it comes to the first two green bridges, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge and the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge. These will both provide capacity for active transport between growing residential areas and the CBD, as well as our key Olympic hubs. Both of these bridges represent significant engineering and construction challenges, and this is especially true for the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, which will span 470 metres across the Brisbane River to connect two parts of our city that are extremely close but separated by water, the CBD and the Kangaroo Point Peninsula. It will significantly reduce the time that it takes for the Kangaroo Point residents and those in Brisbane's eastern and south-eastern suburbs to travel to and from the CBD. Construction is progressing very well with piling underway at both bridge locations. However, since our construction partners tended for these projects and commenced construction, a number of external factors have resulted in an increase to estimated construction costs. For example, during the February 2022 floods, works were paused on the bridge. We were closed for about a month by Maritime Safety Queensland, which cost us in time and labour delays. Councillor Johnston mentioned that she was surprised we didn't blame the state labour government for anything. Well, come and spin it, Chair, because the state labour government borrowed our barges to get rid of their Drift Restaurant that they'd let rot for a decade by the side of the Brisbane River, which we lost additional construction timeframe on top of the month that we lost. And all of this has had impacts to our schedule. We've had ongoing heavy rainfall and dam releases that have impacted conditions on the river, which have furthered works on site. In some cases, no tenders were received for subcontracted work, such as, such is the shortage of materials and labour availability, and we've had to self-perform the work. Add to that the cost increases due to rising cost of materials and labour. It's easy to understand, Chair, why this SCP amendment is necessary. Chair, while the impacts of these cost pressures are very significant to council, we know that we're not alone in dealing with these impacts. All three levels of government are experiencing increases in their major infrastructure projects, as are all cities around the world. Projects under construction like Sydney Metro, like West Australia's Metronet Railline and Victoria's Metro Tunnel have all seen recent massive cost increases. Closer to home, we've seen the cost of the Queensland Government's Coomeragh Connect and the Gold Coast Light Rail projects increase each by more than $500 million. And that is not taking into fa, taking into account the cost growth that is undoubtedly happening on Cross River Rail, but due to the legislation that protects Cross River Rail, we won't know what that cost increase will ultimately be until well after the project is finished. But the reality is, Chair, Mr Chair, these projects are crucial to the future of our city, so we'll continue to work with our construction partners on the successful delivery of projects to build the infrastructure that our city needs. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Any further debate? No further debate. We now move to the vote on these items. First up, item G. Item G, all in favour of item G, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cook, and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Thanks, Billy, close the bars. Councillors, please be quiet while the result is read. Clack.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and four against.
Thank you. Please return to your seats. We now move to the vote on items H, I and K. Items H, I and K, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd November, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded. Thank you, as we move by the deputy mayor, and seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 22 December, 2022, be adopted.
Thank you, Mr Chair. First of all, the Business Hub coming up next week, or this week, leading into next week, taking strategy from paper to execution, an interactive workshop teaching attendees how to turn their strategy around in seven steps. And then, on the 6th, the 12th, surprise and delight, enhance your customer experience, an interactive workshop to create a customer journey map unique to your business. Thank you to our business experts, Impact Healthcare Consulting and Nucleus Digital, that are providing those. Again, plenty of high-calibre mentors are happening as well, 51 over the last month have now joined us, so please, if you've got businesses that need support, send them through to the Business Hub. Last week, we did the Lord Mayor's Multicultural Awards for Business. It was a fantastic event that was held on the 11th of November after a slight delay from the Queen's passing. It was launched in 2009, and it celebrates everything about our multicultural community that is creative, innovative and resilient. Can I congratulate Mr Johnny Shin from the Solomons Group, the Nixinius Multicultural Young Businessperson of the Year Award, Miss Nina Nguyen, Paco's multicultural, from Paco, the Multicultural Entrepreneur of the Year, and Mr George Shah from Balance, the Multicultural Businessperson of the Year Award. Thank you. Mr Deputy Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? No further speakers? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of November, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Murphy, well, sorry, moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Owen, that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 22nd, sorry, Tuesday, 22nd November, 2022, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thanks very much, Deputy Chair. Just briefly, last week, the committee had a presentation on one of the major pieces of infrastructure which is under construction as part of the Brisbane Metro project, which is the new depot of Rochedale. We heard from the project team about how-
We heard from the project team about how our construction is progressing on what will become Australia's largest electric bus depot. To date, most of the works on site have been earthworks, which have been a big task, given it's a massive 10 hectare site and some of the weather conditions that we've been dealing with out there throughout this year. Over 100,000 cubic metres of material has been moved to level out the site. The concrete slab for the main administration building has also now been poured, more than 300 cubic metres of concrete, which shows the scale of this facility. And we recently hit another milestone with the buildings now starting to take shape out of the ground, thanks to the commencement of structural steelworks. 500 tonnes of steel, as I mentioned in the previous report, will be used to construct the depot's facilities, all of which will be provided by Brown Steel, which is located right here in Queensland. As I mentioned, the facility we are constructing at Rochdale will be Australia's largest electric bus depot, and it is a very impressive site to behold when you're out there. Mr. Deputy Chair, cities like Sydney and Melbourne are still trying to work out how they will have the space and capacity to support the transition to an electric fleet, and it's good to know that Brisbane is once again leading the way with transition and decarbonisation of the transport task in the economy. There were also a number of other reports around the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge, the Tuongtu West End Green Bridge, and public transport services out in Polara, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Is there any debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, just very briefly with respect to the Brisbane Metro Committee update. I just want to put on the record my extreme concern about the responses residents are starting to get about the bus review, which indicates that council's not prepared to make any changes. And I am incredibly disappointed by the language I'm seeing in the response to residents. It looks like the fix is in, and it's not surprising me that council's not prepared to listen to residents. We heard councillor Murphy just a few weeks ago deliberately say he would not listen to me at all, but he would listen to my constituents. Well, they're speaking up in droves, and council is ignoring them, telling them they will have to transfer. So what is this sham consultation that council is doing as part of the Brisbane Metro? And I will be calling it out publicly, because what I am seeing now is not genuine engagement with the community, and it's certainly very clear that council does not want to change from the draft bus network review that they've put out, despite the high level of community feedback that's occurring. That reflects very poorly on council. Consultation, I know this council has a problem with understanding what consultation means, but generally, if you ask people their opinions and their views, and you want to get a better outcome, you listen to them and you work with what they're suggesting to make something better. This LMP administration has spent decades now doing the opposite of that, and it's very disappointing.
Further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just rise briefly to speak in regards to petition about the Polara bus. This is something that I would like to express gratitude for the council officers who, since March 2020, have been working extensively with me to ensure that this service can be delivered for the local residents. It will be starting in upcoming weeks, and through putting together multiple business cases and supporting me with the evidence needed to convince TransLink that this was a vital service, it is now going ahead. So I just would like to place on the record my thanks for the council officers who are extremely hardworking behind the scenes, and this will be a great outcome for the local community.
Further speakers? Councillor McGlocklin.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak briefly on item B, the petition that I presented that came forward in regards to the naming of the new bridge between Albion and Newstead, and the naming of the Brettsworf Terminal location, Pensacola Convoy Place. This was a petition in two parts, which has been separated, and we'll see the results of the second part coming through this council next week. That's the naming of a location down at Brettsworf for the Pensacola Convoy Place. It was in the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee today, and this is a good outcome. In regard to the naming of the future bridge under construction between Newstead and Albion, or Albion and Newstead, the Green Bridge, which will be a fantastic asset to continue the great opportunity for people to travel by active transport along the Lorisboney River Walk into Newstead, I think there are opportunities to think about what that name should be. That will come forward. I don't think, and I think the petition response indicated, that it's not appropriate to name an asset before it's actually been constructed, and the naming of that asset will be left to a future time and with further consultation. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Any further debate? No further debate? Councillor Murphy? No? I'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee.
Mr. Chair, I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of November, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Wines, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 22 November, 2022, be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, the presentation to committee last week was the ordinary quarterly major projects planning presentation that we received to make sure that all committee members are across major inner-city projects that are occurring. Once again, I will preempt criticism. This is always a inner-city presentation. We have many projects across the city, from Indrapilly to Brackenridge, to the very Rochdale Priestel, in the very southeast corner. So I just want to preempt that early. We have two petitions there, which I suspect the local councillors will respond to.
Thank you, councillor. Further debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak briefly on items A and B. Just very briefly on item B, because I'm sure that, sorry, item A, I'm sure that the LMP thought it was a great idea to bring forward these inner-city projects to talk about in the chamber. The Brisbane Metro is going so badly, and so are the two green bridges that are on here, so I'm just, I don't understand what they think this is doing. When you blow out the cost of these major projects by hundreds of millions of dollars, you delay them, it causes impacts on the delivery of other projects, it causes the council budget to be impacted adversely, it's not a good thing. It's not a good thing. I can see why you have to talk about everybody else's projects, state government and private sector projects, but the really interesting part is the damage, the absolute destruction and damage that council has done to the unnecessary battery charging station under the Eleanor Chanel Bridge. It is, it is, it is just, to destroy parkland like that, to destroy vegetation like that, all because this council could not put its charging and battery station on the UQ side is just shocking. The actual destruction of parkland is bigger than a house block. The batteries themselves are bigger than a house block, and they're knocking, council's knocking down trees to deliver it. They then have to string power cables up under the bridge and carry them all the way across the river to the other side on UQ, where the metro station end charging facility is going to be. The loss of power through transmission in that way is going to have an adverse impact. The loss of green space and parkland on the southern side of the river is just appalling. This is one of the aspects of the proposal that has gone so badly. So not only are these buses not going to benefit most of my ward, we're losing trees and green spaces, which is just really sad. So, I mean, I don't know why the administration thinks it needs to keep talking about these projects, because they're not going well. They are not going well. And if you think they are, then you must be that out of touch, that bloated and haggard, that you really have no idea, no idea that these things are not going well. Well, I don't know how else to describe it. It just, there's, it doesn't seem to be any oversight of what's going on here. There doesn't seem to be any kind of accountability or responsibility for a half a billion dollar cost blowout. I mean, that's fine. According to the LMP, if you want to overspend by half a billion dollars, there's nothing to see here. That, if you can't recognise that that is a problem, then there's something wrong with you. Now, item B, I don't support this do-nothing response. Now, this is a great example of where Brisbane City Council is absolutely failing Yorongga residents. So remember, earlier today, I talked about the very significant growth that's happening in the suburb of Yorongpilly and Yorongga. And based on council's current and future population projections under the LGIP, there's going to be more houses in Yorongga than there will be in Polara and Bridgeman Downs. Now, I found it interesting listening to the councillor for Callumvale when she talked about how big one of the stages of development in her area was, and there were 45 new houses that had gone in. Forty-five new houses, woo-hoo! We've got 250 units going in on a park at the moment. We've had 400 go in in a retirement village. We've got another 600 coming on a tape site, and we're losing all these community facilities to development. There will be more people living in Yorongga than there will be in Polara, and they're not going to see a cent.
I mean, point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I just don't know what's relevant to the report in this. It's just sort of become a bit of a spray. Yeah.
Councillor Johnston, could you please bring your comments back to the actual petition in regards to the realm?
I understand, yeah. I understand that they don't want me to point out the hypocrisy of what they're doing, but let me read a line from here. "The design, planning and construction of large traffic bridges is very expensive undertaking." Where's another good line? "At this time, there's no funding or timeframe to widen the Cardross Street overpass for general traffic and/or pedestrian movements. There's a high demand for road network improvements throughout Brisbane, and consideration of funding for specific proposals are subject to an assessment of their priority relevant to other similar citywide projects." So let's talk about other similar citywide projects.
No, no, councillor Johnston, no.
No, no, in terms of, they're comparing, they're comparing the...
No, councillor Johnston. Councillor Johnston, I could just take you back for a minute. I'm not trying to curb your debate.
Yes, you are.
You have the right to speak.
Yes, you are.
What I'm saying to you is that you need to speak to the report.
I am talking about this.
And what, no, no, what's in the report, not outside of the report.
That is what is in the report. I just quoted from the report, paragraph 15, paragraph 16. Brisbane City Council is saying no to a pedestrian and road bridge in Yorongga, but they're saying yes to areas in Polara and Bridgeman Downs where there is less development, less houses, less people, and less infrastructure need.
No, councillor Johnston, they're not in that.
The priorities of Brisbane City Council in delivering this response to the petition demonstrates that council is funding its own areas...
No, councillor Johnston, you need to stop. That's, just a moment, councillor. That is not in the report.
It is in the report.
No, no. It simply talks about citywide priorities. You've made the conclusion yourself.
I am allowed to debate.
I'd like to bring you back to what's actually in the report.
So you're saying I can't debate what's in the report?
No, I'm saying that you should debate what's in the report, and you're not.
I am debating what's in the report.
So I'm taking you back, and I'm saying, either please debate what's in the report or sit down.
I am.
Please proceed.
And I am saying...
No, no, please proceed.
That Brisbane City Council is saying no to funding a bridge and pedestrian upgrades in Yorongga because it's not a priority.
No, it's not saying that.
That's what it says.
No.
That is exactly what it says.
Councillor, I'm taking you back to what's in here. Like I said, you have some leniency to make some conclusions, but you're going way off the report. Please come back to the report or sit down.
It's exactly what it says in paragraph 16. "A high demand for the road network, funding of other specific proposals, assessment of their priority relative to other citywide projects." There's no funding for Cardross Street. Council has decided that there are other projects more important than this suburb that has more development happening in it than areas that have been prioritised in this city. That is fundamentally the problem with this petition response. It does not reflect what is happening on the ground in Yorongga with respect to the amount of development. It does not reflect the importance of this road bridge over the rail line for emergency flood access. When the roads are cut, it is the only east-west connection between Annelie-Yorongga, and it does not reflect the fact that there are massive developments happening all around this area. It does not reflect the significant traffic and accident history. There is a footpath less than a metre wide, and it is absolutely appalling that this council is refusing, refusing to upgrade this road and pedestrian bridge to make it safe, to make it functional, and to make it suitable for the huge volume of traffic that uses Cardross Street and Fairfield Road every day. Lives are being put at risk by councils in action. And why? Because they want to prioritise suburbs like Polara and Bridgeman Downs where there's not, and not as much growth happening, because they're LMP wards. That's appalling.
Further debate? No further debate? Councillor, sorry, councillor Wines.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yeah, I've just asked that item B and C be taken, serial item for voting purposes.
Sorry, councillor Johnston, the advice is you needed to do at the beginning before your debate.
Point of order. No, look, point of order, can we take BMC serial item for voting? That's all.
Okay, we'll take...
It really, it really, it does not matter. It's a side of my speech. It's immaterial whether we vote all at once or separately. I'm happy to propose it.
Could you just point me to the rule that says that, though? If you want to debate it separately.
Mr. Chair, while the clerks are attending to that, can I just carry on?
No. No, no. The last... Yes. Councillor Johnston, the advice is section 44.2 for the debate of the motion, and section 44.3 for the putting of the motion. Putting the motion.
It says it has to be done...
Councillor Johnston, it's prior to my exercising the right of reply, I'd already called on councillor Wines, and then you made the call.
So it's not before I speak. The rule is that it has to be done before you...
I'm happy to be clarified. Happy to be clarified, councillor Johnston.
Thank you, I just wanted, thank you.
Yep. Councillor Wines.
No, thanks, Mr. Chair. I always appreciate an opportunity to speak to these matters. Can I just once again remind councillors that we bring this through every quarter? It's something we discuss, the report's something we do every quarter. It's part of our ordinary management, part of the fundamental and sensible and rational things we do here, to make sure that everybody in this place is informed. There's been some really quite bizarre accusations that everything we do and say is political, but largely, those accusations have been made by individuals who are deeply political in all that they say and do. So I suspect they are projecting their motives onto us, rather than us conducting ourselves in the manner that they would suggest. Also, as you know, Mr. Chair, I always love an autobiographical moment. I myself, from grade one through five, was an attendee of a wonderful educational institution called the Yorongga State School. And as a person who is very familiar with Yorongga, I well know Cardross Street. And the benefit of my education at Yorongga State School allowed me to read, and allowed me to understand the delineation between council and state. Now, there was quite, quite an aggressive series of assertions made that council was not living up to its responsibilities because of political reasons, and then much quoting from the report, but this was never read out. But I think it should be. The Cardross Street rail overpass, which is owned by Queensland Rail...
Not right.
Owned by Queensland Rail. And so all of those accusations leveled at us only moments ago. Can I encourage the councillor to aim the where they belong, at the state government, at the owner of the bridge, Queensland Rail? Now, I'm not going to sit here and defend Queensland Rail. They are notoriously limited in what they maintain.
Councillor Johnston.
But can I tell you that the passion with which councillor Johnston entered that debate should be aimed where it belongs, not at her council colleagues, but at Queensland Rail? And can I encourage her to, rather than blame us, blame the people who own the bridge?
I'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I've got to, so I've got to do it in serial item for voting for items B and C, I'm sorry. So I'll start with item A. Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm having my own moment. I'm sorry, I'm having my own moment. I will put the motion. Councillor Johnston is correct. I... I... the... we are not... councillor Johnston is correct in saying that we are not going seriatem. We are simply voting on the item.
Sorry, point of order, Mr. Chair, I proposed that they were separate. I did, I proposed in my speech that they be separate.
Okay. All right. Since councillor Wines proposed in his motion, in his speech, that items B and C be seriatem for the purposes of voting, we will do them all separately. So he can.
Once you're all into reply, the ruling was, once you're all into reply, you cannot do...
No, you can't. No, but it's his speech. Yes. So, let's vote. Item A, those in favour, say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Item B, those in favour, say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no.
No!
The ayes have it. Division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Cassidy. And clerks close the gates. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and four against.
The ayes have it. And we will quickly vote on item C. Okay, I'll put item C. Those in favour say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no.
No!
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Ayes to the right, noes to the left. Close the gates here. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and four against.
Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-second of November, twenty-twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded. Moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Hammond. The report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-second of November, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Allen, any debate?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, item A was a committee presentation on a development at eight Foxton Street in Drapilly. The approved development will see the construction of a six-storey mixed-use development incorporating ground-level commercial tenancies, two levels of office space, and fifteen dwelling units. It also includes three levels of basement car parking. Importantly, the dwellings are concentrated around existing and future public transport nodes which will encourage greater use of public transport services in the area. This development is of a height and scale and form that achieves the intended outcome for the precinct, improves the amenity of the neighbourhood plan area, and contributes to a cohesive streetscape and built-form character. The development application was subject to impact assessment, and as such, public notification was undertaken. No submissions or public comments were received for the development. Item B was a petition requesting that council make property developers keep safety fences within boundaries and off public footpaths. The petition had sixty-six signatures. The response to the head petitioner will outline that temporary construction fences are assessed as part of the planning for the development. Council is conscious that it needs to put up fencing to make sure that pedestrians are safe. These particular fences are of a type that ensures that residents can move safely past construction sites, but obviously, construction sites can inherently be challenging, particularly when materials and things are being delivered. So, well, we do attempt to maintain a one-point-two to one-point-five metre wide footpath. Additionally, these footpath permits are for a three-month period only, and council reviews these periodically to make sure community expectations are being met, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Further debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yeah, thank you. I rise to speak on item B and ask it be taken seriatem for voting purposes. The sixty-six residents who have spoken up about this problem with safety fencing around construction sites in Brisbane are doing so for good reason. We know that people with prams, the elderly, and people with disabilities struggle to negotiate Brisbane's bad footpath network now. But when development is happening, there are massive, massive problems with the way in which developers take up the whole footpath, poorly maintain the footpath, don't provide appropriate diversions, don't provide ramps, don't provide them in safe ways, and in many cases, don't even have approval to do this. The information that councillor Allen just provided then is honestly, it's like it's some sort of fantasy land idea of how this works out in the suburbs. Wherever possible, in high pedestrian traffic areas, council does not support the full closures of footpaths. Well, in my ward, if it leads to a shop, it's fully closed. If it leads to a district centre, it's fully closed. If it leads to parks, it gets fully closed. I'm not sure where else you would consider to be high-trafficked area, but that's what's been happening out in my ward for years and years and years. And yes, we do complain constantly about the state of full footpath closures and also partial footpath closures. This goes on to say that council normally requires the provision of a pedestrian path on the roadway with pedestrians protected by approved water-filled barriers. I mean, that doesn't happen. There's one right now at about five-hundred-and-eighty-four Sherwood Road. You can't walk on the footpath, it's all gravel. There's another one around the corner in Primrose Street where the safety fencing's been up over the whole footpath. You've just got to walk out onto the road and take your chances. There's no way to get round it. It goes on to say that council limits footpath permits to three-month periods. I mean, that's hilarious. Whoever's got the job of renewing those every three months must be the busiest council officer in Brisbane, because most of these permits are in place for years and years. It is appalling for council to say that these are limited mainly to three-month periods. And prior to extension being granted, council looks at community feedback. I'd like to ask councillor Allen, how many permit extensions have been refused? Through you, Mr. Chairman? How many have been refused? That's what I'd like to know. Councillor Allen seems to think that this is something that's happening to protect pedestrians, but I know the ones that bring me, cyclists, pedestrians, mums with prams. These things are getting approved for years at a time, not months at a time. And I just think council has been unrealistic about the adverse impacts this causes for the safety and amenity of pedestrians when footpaths are fully closed, particularly for mums with prams and people in wheelchairs and the elderly. It's hard enough negotiating council's dodgy footpaths now, but when these developments are happening, it is extremely difficult to safely move around them. It is just astonishing for me that council... if I sent this to some of the residents that raise it with me, they would just laugh at council. Three months? You must be dreaming.
Further debate? No further debate, councillor Allen? Nothing? I'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. On item, on item A. This is for item A. All those, to the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Now, I'll move to item B. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no.
No!
The ayes have it.
Division.
No, seconded. We'll now move on to our next item. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, twenty-second of November, twenty-twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded. Moved by councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Mackay, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-second of November, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. The committee presentation last week was on council's investment in solar and renewable energy. Council achieved carbon neutrality in twenty-seventeen, and council has been powered by renewable energy for almost twenty years. And since two thousand and three, we have purchased more than one million megawatt-hours of renewable energy. As the largest carbon-neutral government organisation in the country, we're always looking for new and innovative ways to reduce our carbon footprint. Mr. Deputy Chair, we are doing more than just purchasing renewables, we are harnessing the council's resources along with the latest technology to generate our own renewable energy, including solar power. And there've been fantastic advances in solar technology. The capacity of the solar panels we're installing now is twenty-five per cent greater than those we were using just five years ago. We now have more than nine thousand solar panels installed across ninety-seven sites, including fourteen libraries, four work depots, two entertainment venues, and even a bridge. This saves four-and-a-half thousand tonnes of carbon emissions every year, equivalent to taking fourteen hundred cars off the road. Our bus depots, environment centres, and waste facilities are now all one-hundred per cent solar-powered. And that's without mentioning the new Brisbane Metro Depot at Rochdale, which I know councillor Murphy is working hard to deliver, which will be the biggest ever solar plant in council's history. Once complete, the new Brisbane Metro Depot will reduce our carbon footprint by more than sixteen hundred tonnes per year. That's the equivalent of taking more than five hundred and fifty cars off the road every year. Deputy Chair, this administration is delivering solar in a way that not only provides benefit to the planet, but also to the community. Through the Resilient Clubs Programme, we have delivered more than twenty-one hundred rooftop panels to community facilities around Brisbane, generating nine hundred kilowatts of renewable power. That's about the same as taking four hundred cars off the road. We heard about the real positive benefits for the community, like at the Belimba Bowls Club, where council installed a new solar system, an energy monitoring system, and developed an energy and water action plan. That led to a sixty-three per cent reduction in energy consumption for the club, with an annual cost saving of nearly nine thousand dollars. Further debate to the chamber? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any debate? No debate? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-second of November, twenty-twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded, Mr. Deputy Chair.
Moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Toomey, that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-second of November, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. I'd just like to close the loop on a couple of questions that were taken this morning on notice in committee before I get to my report. Councillor Cumming asked the question, is there any treated water on the island? We had a report on the Wharton Island. I did mention that he was quite keen to have that particular part of Brisbane in his ward. He says he can see it from his window. I said, well, he'd have to probably talk to, he'd have to probably talk to councillor Cassidy about that. But anyway, I also said potentially he could ask councillor Cassidy this question, but anyway, he didn't, he seemed quite reluctant. So the answer is yes. The Tangleluma Resort has a water treatment facility to provide resort guests and the residential houses above the resort with clean and safe water. Councillor Johnston had two questions. Will the sage shales be delivered this financial year or over the length of the programme? Councillor Davis and her team very kindly provided us with the answer, this programme's been delivered over the next three financial years. And the other question from councillor Johnston, which branches were responsible for designing playgrounds? So playground design may be led by City Standards, PPI branch, news, or CPO, depending on the scale and scope of individual projects. Again, there was three chairs involved in that. So, Mr. Deputy Chair, talking about last week's presentation, it was council's compliance and regulatory services proactive community engagements at events. So the manager attended our meeting last week to provide an update on the proactive community engagements being done at events across Brisbane. By attending large public events such as the Brisbane Home Show and the ECHA, residents can connect with officers to discuss queries they may have on topics relating to compliance and regulation matters. The reality is, Mr. Deputy Chair, cars play a pivotal role in the amenity of the city and perform various duties when they are out and about across Brisbane. As chair, I always try to get out of these events when I can meet with the officers, and it's always a highlight in my diary. And I want to thank the officers who are involved with this programme. They're incredibly patient, and I'd like to thank them for all their work.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any debate? No debate? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-second of November, twenty-twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
Seconded from...
By councillor Landis, thank you. Moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landis, that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-second of November, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted.
So, Mr. Deputy Chair, I've already told you all about the wonderful things that happened over the weekend, particularly with our wonderful Valley Fiesta and, of course, the Wyndham Fringe. You've got one more weekend to go along and enjoy that. And our committee presentation was, of course, about the wonderful Brisbane Festival. I urge everyone to look at the presentation, and I will leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor. Any debate? No debate? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-second of November, twenty-two, be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Owen, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-second of November, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Mr. Deputy Chair, item A was the committee presentation, which was from our acting chief financial officer, giving the committee an update on council's financial recovery from the floods and our interactions with the QRA. Item B was our regular quarterly financial reports, and I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you. Any debate? No debate? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Howard?
I have a petition requesting council investigate local area traffic management measures at the intersection of Barker Street and Bowen Terrace New Farm.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you. I have three petitions. Firstly, residents in Yoronga calling on Brisbane City Council to re-establish the Yoronga West Loop for the one-oh-five bus service. Secondly, a petition calling on council to install a yellow line on the blind corner of Menon Road and Walker Street Corinda. Council won't put the yellow line in. And thirdly, a petition from residents in Yorong Pili calling on Brisbane City Council to urgently facilitate a stormwater drainage upgrade for localised flooding.
And councillor Hammond?
I have a petition with a hundred and twenty signatures on it.
Thank you. Councillor Landis, may I have a motion for the receipt of the petitions? Oh, sorry, sorry. Councillor Hutton, sorry. My apologies, councillor Landis.
Mr. Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and refer to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Hutton, seconded by councillor Strunk, that all petitions as presented be received and refer to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of any, of an office of the independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? Are there any matters of general business? There being no general business, meeting closed.